To tonight's meeting, it is the April 5th meeting of Eureka City Council. And I would like to start, please, with a roll call.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
Excellent. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Legions? And Ms. City Attorney, do we have a report out from the closed session?
Nothing to report out from closed session today, Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Now, we are going to move on to the Mayor's Announcements section of the agenda, and I am going to ask first, if Councilmember Arroyo would please read the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week 2022 proclamation. And I believe Brittany Wilson, telecommunications supervisor Brittany Wilson, is here to receive that.
Great, so all of you can come on up. I know we have a crew here today. Thank you for being here. So this proclamation is in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is Sunday, April 10th through Saturday, April 16th, 2022. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services; and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property; and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center; and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact or citizens have with emergency services; and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety dispatchers at the Eureka Public Safety Telecommunications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients; and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, declare the week of Sunday, April 10th through Saturday, April 16th, 2022, to be National Telecommunications Week in Eureka in honor of the dispatchers whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
I want to ask who's minding the phones.
So we had one dispatcher and one of our officers that are staying behind that was trained in dispatch to let us all come here. So on behalf of the Eureka Police Department and the Humboldt Bay Fire Department Communication Center, I would like to thank you for your, our recognition. This past year has been full of challenges and changes, and the Communication Center has met each challenge with grace and professionalism. The Communication Center answered 125,765 calls in 2021. Over 31,000 of those were 911, and we dispatched over 71,705 calls for service for police and fire. Communication Center has also implemented text to 911 and underwent multiple upgrades and changes to radio, CAD, and communications equipment. Each dispatcher in the center met these challenges and rose above them. I am proud to work alongside and honored to work with a group of such dedicated professionals, and I thank you for our recognition.
Well, you certainly deserve it.
May I ask a quick question?
You sure can.
Will you tell us a little bit about text to 911? Because I've heard of this, but I don't really know how it works.
Yes, so it's actually a system that's implemented in, I'm not sure the exact year, but very soon it's going to be actually mandatory for each agency in California to have text to 911. So it's a technology that allows you to actually text from your phone if you're in a situation where you can't actually make the phone call or speak on the phone. So allow us to text back and forth with you on a system that we have implemented in there. If the system does, for some reason, is internet-based, so if it does go down, fortunately, it will give you a bounce-back message that says, unfortunately, it's not available this time, to then proceed to call 911. But it will still have the same GPS latitude longitude qualities as good as what you would have if you called in on a cellphone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's good to know about.
Every time I hear the statistics, I just think, how can you do that many calls in the amount of time that you have? I mean, it is truly astounding when you start talking about the tens of thousands of calls you get in only 365 days of the year.
Yes, we stay very, very busy, but we have a great group of people, and they embody teamwork, so
They really do.
Makes a difference.
I have never heard anything but great things about the work that you guys do and the grace with which you do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I would also like to say something really quickly. I just want to thank Brittany Wilson. She's taken over a lot of responsibilities recently for our Dispatch Center and has been critical for us.
Yay, well, that's nice. Next up, Councilmember Bauer will read. For some reason, I wanted to call you a different title, like, I don't know, Royal Councilmember Bauer. Volunteer Appreciation Month 2022 proclamation.
Thank you. So this is for, this is in recognition of Volunteer Appreciation Month. There's two Rs there. We'll have to fix the spelling. Whereas volunteering of one's time and resources has traditionally been and continues to be an elemental part of the essence and tradition of our country and is essential to its spirit and vitality. And whereas we are a community of people who thrive on helping each other towards the shared goal of a better life and future for all. And whereas volunteerism is increasingly recognized as an important partner in government and industry in doing the work of the nation. And whereas volunteerism is vital, fulfilling, and enriching to the participants as well as to the recipients of the service and should be encouraged for the benefits to all and the community at large. And whereas the City Council recognizes the value of Eureka's volunteers, a dedicated group of individuals who are vital to the present and future of our community. Now, therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim and declare the month of April 2022 to be Volunteer Appreciation Month in Eureka in honor of the volunteers' hard work and selfless dedication to the city of Eureka, making it a better place to live and work.
Do we have a Gail Poplin here to receive this? Oh, you're online on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the city, too. They have been great support. They let us use their mower, and they do all kinds of things for us, and I really appreciate that. Also, the Humboldt Trails Council has been great support for us. And recently, we got a grant from the Conservation Grant from the Sequoia Park Zoo to do some planting. And then, of course, all of my fellow volunteers who we really enjoy being together. And it's just like Scott said, it's a win-win situation. You know, the community benefits, and we get a lot of benefit out of doing it, too. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. And you represent the Trail Stewards, which is one group of volunteers for the city.
Right.
Is there anybody here from any other volunteer groups? If not, I know our police department relies a lot on volunteers. Our committees, our commissions, our boards, there are 13 of them. Each of them have several volunteers that commit quite a lot of time to the city. So we're very grateful. Thank you for coming on and receiving this. And thank you for everybody who takes the time to make Eureka a little bit better. Our next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Bergel. And that is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have someone here to receive this? Thank you. Do you want to come forward?
Kira Morse from the North Coast Rape Crisis Team, I believe.
Thank you for being here. So, City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2022. Whereas sexual assault affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds with public health and social justice implications for every person in Eureka. And whereas staff and volunteers of the rape, North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others and encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention, education, and awareness-raising programs throughout Humboldt and Delnart County. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but can, through collaboration and partnership, work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimized. Now, therefore, I, Councilmember Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council and the Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and reaffirm our commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence. Thank you.
We appreciate that vision, for sure.
Oh, yes.
Feel free to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you again for recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month. My name's actually Amanda LeBlanc. I'm the new executive director of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. It's my 32nd day. So, but I'm really, really excited to really dig into this work in this county and just to thank you so much for your ongoing support. Could not have had a better lead-in with the volunteer program because we are holding our first volunteer training for anyone who's interested in becoming a sexual assault counselor in Humboldt or Delnart County beginning April 25th. So please visit our website, just in cases. It's a really rewarding and challenging way to give back to your community. So thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm going to take this back to my team.
Well, congratulations on your new job, and I'm sorry I was given bad information.
No.
I want to put it fully on the shoulders of our city manager.
That's exactly right. Yes.
Okay.
That's right. Next time, better. Yeah, absolutely. Yep, nope. Thank you so much.
Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
I was just wondering if others who are credentialed advocates can join your training programs to get continuing education units.
So we're not set up necessarily for CEUs, but we wouldn't be, we, but I can look into it, and certainly it is excellent professional development. And we're, so I would need to, I would need to know which specialization because, you know, all of them are so different. But we absolutely do free professional development to anyone who interacts with sexual assault survivors in their professional lives as we know that we are only 10 people, and so we need the community to come in and join us in this fight.
Definitely. Yeah, I was thinking of the Coast Guard. I'm a service member and a victim advocate, but I know that a lot of the other victim advocates in the area are always looking for those professional development opportunities and opportunities to interface with some of the resources locally, so I will connect with you.
Please do. Yes, I would love to host something like that and work across all kinds of disciplines.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, we'll have public comment in a little bit, so you can comment on it then. Next, I would like to invite Councilmember Castellano to introduce, I believe April is National Poetry Month, right?
It sure is. And so April is National Poetry Month, and I'm going to bring up Will Gibson, who's the City of Eureka's poet laureate. And Will is, not only is he poet laureate, he's co-producing the first Redwood Poetry Festival this week. And he also has a bookstore and publishing company and does numerous outreach programs with area youth. Thanks for being here, Will.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the first-ever Redwood Poetry Festival, which started as an idea that I wanted 10, 15 years ago, way before I even moved here. But when I moved here, I knew this was the perfect place for it. And it started out as a day, like, one day, just one, and now it's a full seven days. So I'm stressed. But I did want to share, we have Thursday, we're at North Coast Repertory Theater. Friday, we're at Forever Found. Saturday, we're at the Matiel Center. Sunday, we're in Arcata for a whole slew of things, mostly at North Town Coffee in the morning and Richard's Goat in the evening. There'll be workshops at the Epitome Gallery. If you go to wordhumboldt.com, it's got it all written out nice and neat, so I don't have to bore you with the details now. I would like to share something a little personal, though. I'm not from here. I came through on a book tour years ago and said to my touring partner at that time, who is one of our featured performers this week, by the way, I told him, you know, I'd like to live someplace like this, offhand a comment. And then I came through on another book tour roughly two years later, and I haven't left. And this is, this is my home. I say, I wasn't born here, but I got here as soon as I could. And this was my impression after deciding that I was going to move here. "To the place of misfits who have been cast aside for refusing to bend or be broken or have been broken and wish to be bent back into a shape, less cookie cutter, more morning mist, to where the wind whispers in your dreams. Bring stardust to your doorstep, grins at the crows, to where the hills are as round as the hips of the goddess herself, where the fingers of God balance you across the sky like a big brother who holds your hand across the country, to where the sun never visits long enough to be bothersome, where the mountains point up to remind you where you are going, and water is as clear as what you should do next, I will return. To where the tweakers cuss you for not giving them any money, but hold the door open for you anyway. To where the wild side is as hidden as you hide it, where the story of your scars comes second to how your day was, where the work you do is seen and matters, I will return. To where every song is sung by a choir of off-key people, where the place is the word itself, to where the sky is not, is only gray because not everything is black or white, to where the land is as green as the outsider's envy, where the river is as mad as it wants to be, moves its mouth for years at a time where they lose entire coastlines, I will return. To where the drug of choice is the late afternoon, to where the people walk with redwood spines, speak with the ocean rooted where wild flowers grow, a family fierce enough to make the forest change color with their mood and hand you time like you wish you had, the heart to hold on your own, where the sea lions become permanent ink block shot at home, where the name actually means, I have found it. I have found it. I will return. Thank you." Wordhumboldt.com.
That was lovely. Thank you so much. And we encourage everybody to, you know, go to the poetry festival, read poetry, write poetry. This is the month for it. I think every month is the month for it, but this is the special month for it. That's the end of our presentation of, you know, our proclamations. I do have my brief mayor's report. And I'm reporting that we, I went to a CivicWell conference, Councilmember Castellano and I did. It was a really interesting conference where we talked about issues of climate, energy, housing. Those are the ones that really pop up into mind. It was a, it was a great opportunity to meet with other folks from other communities who have problems very similar to ours. And even the ones, communities that were very different had problems similar to ours. And it's always nice to be able to commiserate and share notes and get some good, new kind of best practices to bring back. So I'm really glad that we participated in that. I also wanted to, I mentioned our commissioners, our board and committee members, of which we have 13, 13 different committees, many more commissioners and such. And for the first time, we brought the chairs of each of the commissions together prior to our strategic visioning, which was a really great opportunity for them to get to share what they've been working on, what they are talking about in their meetings, and how that relates to what we're working on in our strategic visioning. We did a strategic visioning plan last year in 2021. We are sort of just tweaking it this year, updating it, seeing what we're doing well, seeing what we need to work on. And they were able to contribute to that discussion through this meeting. And I was very grateful, and it was really enlightening to hear, hear from them. We don't get to hear from them enough, so hopefully we'll hear from them more. I have been distributing, that watched the road signs on Hodgson Street, which is notoriously bad for racing and driving very quickly. I made it, you know, six or seven blocks, and every single person I talked to had lots and lots to say about the speed at which people drive down that street. So we did a speed study before I started passing out the signs, and we'll do a speed study again after and see if they, if people are paying attention, if they're slowing down at all, and continuing to watch with great interest just the safety on that road in particular. And other than that, I'm continuing to participate in lots of housing discussions and access to dental health care. Those are two issues that are kind of top of mind and always, always checking in on that childcare issue. Oh, also, this is Week of the Young Child. So if you have a childcare provider, know a childcare provider, anybody who is helping us to take care of our young ones so that everybody can go to work, please thank them. And in that, in that way, I want to really give a big thanks to our little saplings team. And also our Community Services District, the Parks and Rec that do the camps and all of those things. We are so grateful for the work that you do, not just because you give our children more enrichment and development, but you also give families confidence to be able to go to work and focus on their job because they know their children are being taken care of. So happy Week of the Young Child, everybody. And with that, we have a presentation today.
Mayor Seaman?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for interrupting, but we have, EPD has a challenge coin they'd like to present to one of our community members, and I was hoping we can maybe get that in here.
Sure.
Captain Stevens is.
I'm happy to do that. Chief Jarvis?
Once again, that was the city manager's fault for not getting it on the agenda.
Come on up, please.
I'm so excited. This is news.
I'm excited, too. It's not going to be as eloquent as our poet, I'm afraid, but it's important. Would you like to bring your family up with you?
No, just a couple of friends.
Okay, they're welcome to come up. Mr. Charles Philip helped us in an event a couple of months ago, and it was significant. And we'd like to recognize him with our department's challenge coin, which represents the Valor, Service, and Community, which are values that we hold dear. And this is due for the following reasons, if I may. Mr. Philip, your gallant actions on December 24th in aiding an unconscious victim who was being actively assaulted is deserving of the Valor, Service Award, for which you were nominated by the Eureka Police Department. A summary of the basis for your award follows. On December 24th, officers with the Eureka Police Department responded to the 400 block of 8th Street for a report of an in-progress assault. Upon officer's arrival, they located the suspect being separated from the victim by Mr. Philip. Mr. Philip had interceded in the assault by removing the actively assaulting suspect from the victim. The suspect was then taken into custody. The extent of Mr. Philip's involvement to save this and protect this victim was not fully known until after the incident when video surveillance footage was obtained. There, it was determined that Mr. Philip was alerted to the assault when he saw the suspect assaulting an unconscious victim. He then attempted to pull the suspect off the victim, eventually grabbing the suspect by the leg and removing them from the victim. Mr. Philip then stood between the victim and the suspect to prevent further assault until police arrived. Officers determined that had Mr. Philip not intervened, the outcome would have been much worse and potentially fatal. As the chief of police interim, it is my pleasure to honor and recognize you for your courageous and selfless actions. Please accept with this coin the recognition and thanks of the Eureka Police Department.
Thanks, ma'am. Would you like to say something? Sir, would you like to say something?
Yeah, please, I would.
I live in low-income housing, and I really appreciate this. I couldn't do your job. If I had to do this every day, I'd go crazy. I mean, and these guys, they're the only ones that come out and back us up. Until the county stops putting in drug dealers into the building and career meth addicts, this is going to continue. And I wish someone would do something about it because this is really, I have to help that little lady there. She has to be careful when she goes out and takes out the trash. The other lady, she called me up because there was a crazy person out there. And once one group of people, once one meth dealer, we have two meth dealers there right now, once, and several users, and the county places them in there because they have a deal with Danco. And until somebody does something about this, this will continue. They know they have a free ride because the only people who are going to come out are the police department, and their hands get tied because management won't do anything. So I'm sorry to unload on you, but you're the head chief, you're the mayor, and these guys always come out and back us up, and I'm really happy you're here. I wish the whole force was here. And I'm sorry I didn't say nice things, a lot of nice things about what's going on, but that's the reality of it. We'll talk. Okay. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to thank Officer Clark, who's here on her night off to see that she's the one that nominated Mr. Philip for this award and saw the result of his actions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for fitting us in.
All right, next up, we have a presentation from Sarah Vogel, who is here to talk about, to give us an update on the AEGIS facility. Sarah here? I think she told me she was going to be here in person. Sarah, is that you?
Is that you?
845?
845.
2165? Nope. Yeah.
Yes, she had confirmed.
I went, she did confirm? Yeah. Well, we'll try to reschedule her then. And we will move on to the public comment period. So those of you who would like to make a public comment, we'll start in-house, and then we'll move on to Zoom. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, you guys, Pam. Still get nervous when I come up here. First thing I'll say is it's nice to, you know, have a council member come up and talk to you, even though we're definitely on opposing sides. I don't come up here to give anybody a hard time. I'm trying to help clean up the community and for my kids to have a safer life in the future. And Eureka is full of crime. I see it on the group Take Back Eureka. People can't even go to the movie theater. They're worried about their car being broke in when they come back. And then on their way in, they're getting assaulted by, not assaulted, but aggressive panhandling they got to deal with. Okay, we had a 70-plus-year-old man assaulted on the waterfront trail. Seems like every week or every other week, somebody's getting assaulted on that waterfront trail. Crime in Eureka is out of control. I mean, the panhandlers, I don't know what you would call aggressive, but I said standing five feet from your window with a sign, that's aggressive enough for me. You don't know when one of them's going to stab you. They might think you said something that you didn't even say and get stabbed.
like those other people on the waterfront trail minding their own business. And next thing you know, they're assaulted because some tweaker thought they said something to them. That's happened numerous, numerous times. Something needs to be done to clean up the city on the way in. Five people at the Bay Shore Mall hanging around the stoplights. Two dogs running back and forth in between lanes. You're going to have, somebody's going to get ran over there or assaulted. That's got to end. It's not safe for them to be there panhandling. You need to reinstate the ordinance that says for their own safety, they can't be there. What happened to that? I know the law keeps you from doing certain things, but there's so many things you guys can do. And I've said it before, I'm not against any of you people. I'm not here to have war with you or badmouth you, but it is what it is. When I'm told the city is safe and you're doing all you can and then I don't see nothing being done about it, that's a big problem for me, you know? I don't live in Eureka, but Eureka affects the whole county. It really does. You got a syringe exchange openly selling drugs left and right, throwing needles everywhere, 777 syringes behind the Taco Bell alone. That is a problem. And then you got the, let me see it right, the code services, I'm not sure how to say it. What is he? Code enforcement? He was here for his, every two years, he comes and talks to you guys about all the things that he finds and then not one mention of any syringe whatsoever. I talked to him personally and he finds numerous tons of syringes all the time in those houses. They're everywhere and it just makes me wonder why there's no mention of it. It's like somebody saying, "Don't talk about it. Don't talk about it. Don't do nothing about it." And why would nobody want to do anything about it? You either getting paid to do nothing about it or you're clueless. I don't know which one. But the city of Eureka is a slumhole. I mean, if I was a council member or even if I was the mayor, I'd do something about it. I'd want people to look up to me and know I'm cleaning up the city, not sit there week after week after week and do nothing about it.
Come on up, Genevieve. Oh, come on up.
Anyway, this is Genevieve Wilson. Talk about volunteer. I have to say, I'm so happy I bought in April 1st. I've joined the volunteer all the time. Volunteer to fight for our freedom and in front of the house, our body, our choice. So we have a freedom to do what we need to do. And another thing too, today I just was over pumping Hora, going to CR. Public transportation, pass the stop sign, go in front of us. It's very dangerous. And on my way back from the CR, another car, just regular passenger, go through the stop sign from Saobong and they don't do anything. They'll stop, and there's have to be something to do about that corner. That's what I'm saying before anything happened. Another thing too, talk about sexual assault, assault month. And we need to prevent that. What happened is I was in co-op one time in the bathroom. A person dressed like a lady, but he looks like a man. He was, before I go in there, he was washing his hand about 10 minutes. And then when I do my business and come out, she's still there. So I do my job. I reported to the manager. I say, "Look, somebody like that in the house." And you have to get a code to go into the bathroom. Something can happen to a young girl. And also maybe can kill somebody and come out. We don't even know it. So the next day I called, because I went out to talk to the manager, nothing I can do about it. But people need to be more civilians. I mean, you look at somebody's trend, maybe just say, "Oh, the bathroom is out of order" or something because it's happened. You don't want anything happen. Then you don't have to have this victim to be taken care of. So that's why I said, then the next day I called the manager, is a lady. I reported to her. I said, "You need to watch out because I care for people. I'm a nurse for 45 years. We want to prevent it happen and this is so many bathrooms, you're a co-ed, you need to know that." Okay, and poetry, I love poetry. So this is my month. April Fools. I'm born in April Fools. Sexual assault, you know, and you have to prevent that. And the poetry, I love poetry. So I sing a poetry, I say, "We are baby boomer. I'm one of them. Keep getting the booster, we'll be boosted out." So this is my, anyway, we have to stand up for our right. I understand. We all know that. My fashion is just let people know. That's true. Do get the book, The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy because we know so many people and this is not a vaccine. This is not a biological agent. Young girl, 20 years old, have ovarian cysts. A woman cannot have children is very sad. I have four kids. But my point is, we have to watch out. It's not safe and effective. We all know that. They want the depopulation, 10% to 15% depopulation. Like for, then is enough. I understand my time is up. And also, we have a beautiful place for Eureka. The transit is kind of be careful. All right? Bye-bye. Thank you.
Well, the usual tenor is violence and the public mayhem that has come over Eureka like a biblical plague. Good to see a new city attorney. You're going to have your hands full in this town, I can tell you. Old Town seems to be the ugly, ugly duckling, the abandoned ugly duckling that has been served its purpose and has drawn the relics that bring all the mayhem to our town and into our midst. And it feels like if... Is this on? Yes, to be a business owner down there because the depleted streets down there are only inhabited by those that drag sleeping bags behind them. And yesterday, oh yeah, yesterday, I saw one family that were obviously tourists. And I have to say, the children looked fearful and the parents looked disgusted. And they looked down my alleyway and it's as usual, you know, you see those little orange dots everywhere, AKA the needle caps and feces and all the other pleasantries. I mean, seems like you should, for example, our mayor should, for example, take a long stroll through Old Town and talk to people in Old Town and you're going to get the very same, very same, yeah, things to hear over and over again, if they have the balls to speak up to you and be honest and not fear repercussions from the city one way or the other, right? Sending your goons after people, all the public press, but, or trying to sue people. But anyway, Old Town is in dire straits. There is no doubt about it. Tourist season is coming up. I don't think we will have much tourism coming. Again, TripAdvisor reviews speak volumes. And there is a ratio that is called the five-to-one ratio. It is, you need five positive reviews to alleviate the impact of one negative review. So you better get to work to make Eureka safe again, is all I can tell you. Besides that, talking about violence, well, you know, this whole harm production, sorry, fight and slip, harm reduction, yeah, harm reduction programs, when we got all those experts on the screens telling us how good it would be for us in Eureka, just doesn't pan out for a small community like ours with 28,000 people in this town and then hundreds, thousands of needles being everywhere. And let's talk about a priest that got chopped into bite-sized pieces. Let's talk about a 19-year-old girl that got stabbed, you know, in the Hilfiger parking lot. Let's talk about a man who got bludgeoned to death right over there at the birth center. Let's talk about the 70-year-old man who got attacked at the waterfront. Those are the pleasantries that people have to at least be aware and prepared for when they come to Eureka because Eureka is a total shithole and there's no doubt about it. The whole point why people come here is that somebody needs to be politically accountable for that. And there is just no way of, you know, one nice proclamation after the other and singing kumbaya and blowing smoke each other's rumpuses up, each other's rumpus. It is about political accountability and not grinning there behind your masks or, yeah, without those masks by now. It's about taking political accountability because that's the name of the game of politics.
Thank you very much. And in the future, can you try to refrain from using curse words? We're going to try to keep some decorum here.
Good evening. I just am come here as a personal person and it's to bring attention to the January 17, 2020 Sewer Lateral Ordinance. That ordinance puts all buyers at risk if not knowing when or what's going to trigger a very, very expensive repair bill on their homes. And it's going to force some of our new buyers into foreclosure because they can't afford it. The one I'm currently talking about, her estimate alone is $37,000. That's way more than the city gives in their 2% loans. It puts every real estate transaction at risk of a lawsuit since this is not a point-of-sale requirement like it is in Trinidad, Arcata, Ferndale, and Riodell. And the way the ordinance is structured, costs can vary greatly depending if you're an individual having to have it done, which means you pay all of the upfront costs. You have to get a loan. You have to pay all the encroachment permits. Or if it's with the city making the changes under their annual project path, which then means it's at a very discounted rate and you get invoiced. The ordinance is just too gray and needs serious considerate revisions. I've taken the time to pull up every ordinance in the county and I still find Eureka's the grayest. Thank you and good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. My name's Cameron Stenbrook. I'm originally from Fortuna. I just recently, about a year ago, moved to Eureka. I want to talk to you about my experience, just my first weekend. So I had a buddy come in and we drank on a Saturday night. The next day, his truck got broken into, stole his girlfriend's phone. But, you know, we don't like to really call the cops about that, so we decided to ping it and then we went to the Royal Inn. When we got to the Royal Inn, there was nothing, there was hundreds, I'm talking hundreds of syringes in caps. There's probably thousands of them just in the Royal Inn. And then I looked to the back of me and that's Rita's. So I'm not going to eat there. And then to the left of me is the jail. You know what I'm talking about right now? I don't, I really do like Eureka. I really do. But I just came up here to voice my opinion about the exchange program because all you're really doing is giving free needles. And if you're going to give them out, then please at least, at least clean the streets. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no clapping. Thank you.
Hello. In the past, I've mentioned that a lot of the problems around here might be in certain people's faces more than others. So I figured I'd take an opportunity to share some of my experiences. I haven't quite taken that approach yet, but I think one of the worst experiences I've had here in Eureka, and I'll start off with I'm here for a reason. I love the place. It's changed a lot in recent years. But one of the worst experiences I've had was actually just drinking coffee on my front porch. I got a side yard, so I'm not necessarily facing the street, but that didn't stop some crazy person from entering my yard and defecating right in front of me. And I happen to have not had my daughter with me that morning, thankfully. And, you know, that just highlights the problem we have and the lack of shame or pride or whatever. You know, you can, you can go out to the courthouse on Fridays with us sometime. I would encourage you guys to come visit, even if you don't stand with us, just come and check it out. I'm with these guys often. 80% are probably elderly folk, but there's usually this one guy down there and he doesn't make sense. He's out of his mind. You could tell there's a screw loose, can't have a conversation. He'll come up and he'll touch people. He mumbles and you can't understand a word he's saying. And, you know, my heart goes out to him where I think he, I know he needs help. And when I look back at the past couple of years of seeing people with a rhetoric towards these mandates, it's like I know people that have lost their jobs with the city, let alone other places because, you know, we want to follow the science and go with safety. Well, what about the safety of the people on the streets? We just leave them there. And then they wander the streets, defecate in my yard, let alone in the alleyways, chase away tourism and money from the community. Why don't we mandate something for them to get help? You know, because they are coming up in people's bubbles and faces. You know, we just talked about sex assault. I'm sure that happens on the streets. Where's the compassion when we just leave them to rot? You know, the last talker said something about at least clean up the needles. No, don't, don't just clean them up. We need to, we need to stop the source of this problem. We can clean things up indefinitely, but that doesn't solve the problem, you know? It doesn't make things safer for any of us. Maybe you guys live in safer areas, but it's not safe where I live. I could look out of my bedroom window and see people camping from my bedroom window. And, you know, I don't want to bother them. Everybody needs a place to be. But my heart goes out to people that are living like that because I was homeless for three years and I got out of it. I never turned into a nuisance. And thankfully, I've been out of it for several years, but like, we need solutions. And I know it's not unique to Eureka, but as we've said in the past, you guys are leaders and I'm hoping to find some unique solutions so we can like have something to brag about. You know, let's figure it out and show other places what we can do. Because, oh, I didn't even get into all the examples I've had with, like I sidetracked. But yeah, I mean, there's so many stories. I mean, even the guy that saved the assault victim. So many people have done that and never got recognition. It happens daily around here, but I'm glad somebody got recognition and thank you, EPD, for everything you do.
Thank you. There's always two weeks from now you can finish up.
Hello, my name is Thomas Cohn and I've been in Hummel County since 1983. And my wife has been here since 1947. I don't know if anybody drove in from Highway 101 into Eureka, but the area before Target is one of the first impressions that you see when you come into Eureka. Caltrans had cleaned it up and now again, there's homeless there with their garbage. And as a first impression, if I was a tourist, I might get gas or go to McDonald's, but I wouldn't stop, you know? And we need to really recognize the impressions that Eureka's giving by having these people on 4th Street and if they're going north on 5th Street. If you haven't driven on V Street lately, V and 6th, and seen all the chain link fence trashed down. And I don't know who is in there. Councilman Bauer said there's like four different owners there for that property, but something needs to be done. And I'm just saying, you know, as someone driving in, I live at Face Lu Wildlife Area, but driving in from there to Eureka, we need to be very cognizant of the impression that we're giving as a city, you know, for our tourists that we want to come and spend money here. So just a couple of comments and I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Wilson. I've been associated with government and engineering for over 60 years. We're nearing the end, hopefully, of this Corona nonsense and fear and all this stuff that went along with it there. They'll, I've seen the political game being played over the years. I remember when Wallace ran back in 1940 or whatever it was there. It doesn't give you too much confidence in the system. When it takes four months for the court judge to sign a piece of paper, which they assure us is going to take three or four days. Or when our friend, she's 94 at the beginning of the two-year nonsense, and here it is, two years later and she hasn't been outside of the house yet. Now, the senior news says you're supposed to socialize when you get older. Okay, I'm pretty old, but the thing is, how can you socialize when you are afraid? How can you socialize when all the people, all the organizations have fear and they use that fear to drive their political motives? It's, it's a shame. The society is collapsing, continuing to collapse. When I read, hear these rumors about over in China, oh, they're locked, they're welding the doors shut on these 30 and 40-story apartment buildings so that the people won't get out. And oh, that's rumor, that's rumor. Then I see it on the internet. It gets out. The people are, over in China there, they have that fear and they do that. They weld the doors shut. The people, one lady was telling us about, one woman, she jumped out the window because she was, I don't know if she was running out of food or whatever it was, but she didn't want to be stuck in there for her whole life. And anyway, it's, you guys got to remember that just because you have this fear on your side, you shouldn't take advantage of it. The Department of Health, one of the things they did was to get rid of the restrooms so you can't wash your hands, so you can't go to the bathroom. You know, all that kind of stuff. It's amazing. You know, all that kind of stuff. It, it's, it's amazing how it's backfired on everything and it's not the same as it was. Thank you.
So now we will go over to our Zoom calls or do we have any public comments on Zoom? I don't see any hands up. Do you see anything? Alrighty, then I will close public comment and we'll move on to the next, oh. All right, Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, hi. Excuse me, I'm from the nation's finest. I just like to say, you know, it's my first time attending one of these city council meetings. But basically what we do, we work with homeless veterans across three states, you know, and to end primarily end veteran homelessness. And I just like to create awareness. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any other public comment? All right, I will go ahead and close public comment and we will go to item E, which is public hearings. And we have one item, uh, that's a public hearing today. That is E one. Excuse me, general planned, plan amendment petition for property at Northwest corner of Fairfield and West Harris Streets. I did.
That'll be me.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Caitlin Castellano, Senior Planner, I'll be presenting that. I'm going to get my screen share going. Alright, so hello again, Caitlin Castellano, Senior Planner, and tonight I am presenting Pearson Properties General Plan Amendment Petition. Approval of the petition will allow Pearson Properties to apply for a general plan amendment and zone reclassification to change the land use designation and zoning of their vacant two point one acre parcel on West Harris Streets near Eureka Mall. Per Eureka Municipal Code, a property owner may submit an application for a general plan amendment only after the city council approves a general plan amendment petition. So here's a standard bird's eye view of the subject property showing some of the city limit boundaries. Uh, zooming in, the property is located at the northwest corner of West Harris and Fairfield Streets. And it is adjacent to several parcels owned by Pearson Properties in purple, one of which houses their main office in yellow. So Pearson Properties seeks to change the general plan land use designation from medium density residential in yellow to general commercial in orange, which would allow the site to be rezoned from residential medium to service commercial. Even though this general plan amendment petition process is not intended to judge or analyze the merits of a proposed general plan amendment, the proposed amendment and subsequent rezone have the potential to serve the public interest because the change would allow for the development of higher density multifamily housing than currently allowed. And it would allow for a commercial business use, which is prohibited by the current residential zoning designation. It would also allow Pearson Properties to relocate their main office, uh, where the star is to the subject parcel in order to free up their current parcel and the parcels to the north that they also own for the city to develop affordable housing. So therefore, because the general plan amendment has the potential to serve the public interest, staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to approve the petition to allow them to apply for the general plan amendment. And here's a suggested motion that I can bring up later and myself, Principal Planner Getz are available for questions and I'm not sure, but the applicant may be in the audience tonight. I didn't see them on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions first for Senior Planner Castellano or for Principal Planner Getz? On this item? It does not appear so. So we'll go ahead and open, oh.
I have a question.
Councilmember Moulton.
Just trying to find my new button there. Thank you. In the, uh, the zoning designation that we are changing it to, I'm just curious, is there anything that requires um, a setback from the street for general commercial? Concerned about that corner specifically, it's dangerous and weird and the fact that that lot is empty makes it easier. Obviously it can't stay that way forever. But is there something that would prevent them from building up to the, the street line?
Yeah, actually there is. There's currently a, I think it might be twenty foot wide easement along West Harris Street. So if it was to be developed, it could only be landscaping and parking right along the street. So the building would have to be set back. I, I apologize that I don't know the exact, but I think it's twenty feet or more, the easement along the street.
Okay, but there's still the potential for them, for someone to plant landscaping in the sightline?
Yes.
Okay, that wouldn't change my decision, but might be something to look at later on.
Yeah, and this process, if you approve it tonight, it'll allow them to apply for the general plan amendment, which will then have to go to the Planning Commission and then their recommended action will come to the city council and then there would actually be two meetings because it'll be a legislative update that'll need to occur for the general plan land use designation to change. Sorry.
Lovely, thank you.
Alright, any other questions then? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for a public comment. So you can come on up. Oh, did you, yeah. Yeah, you.
My name is Diane Dobbs. I live at the property right next to, um, the Pearson property. I actually have some questions. Um, and I didn't know how else to get at these questions. Um, I'm curious, what is the current number of, of, of multifamily, you know, uh, zoning? And then what, what, what's the increase to? And is it, is it the ability to do commercial, by reading the, the, um, the thing, the whatever, the, the plan, I can't, I don't know what you call it. It, it makes it sound like it could be commercial and multifamily. Is that true? Like, am I misreading that? Like, what's it going to become? And I'm almost looking at Pearson because he's right there. Mr. Pearson. So I have those questions and then like, I guess the parking and ingress and egress is all gonna be, is all in the planning stages if you approve the, the ability, you know, so I guess this step is to approve for them to plan, right? And then they have to go through the planning process.
Exactly, yeah.
But I'm curious, like, what, what is, what's the increase to? What's the, what's the ask? It's not really stated.
We don't, so we'll ask that when you sit down. I don't know how else to say that. So you'll ask the questions and then council will say, that was a good question. Then they'll ask.
Okay.
Do we have any other comments or, uh, for this public hearing? Come on up.
Where specifically is the new office for the Pearson building going? There's an Autozone and a VA clinic. Is it in that area that they want to move their office to? Because I know they own that property there where the VA clinic is and Autozone is.
So they just, oh. We'll answer that.
Thank you.
It's an awkward situation where we have questions. I'm sorry. Alright, do we have any other comments or questions? Alright, I will bring it back to council and, um, we can go ahead and Councilmember Pregel.
So would you be willing to tell us where exactly is the location the building will be going to?
Yes, uh, it will be going to the parcel that they'd like to amend the land use designation and the zoning. So it's the north west corner of Fairfield and West Harris Streets.
So it's the grassy lot?
It's the grassy lot at the corner, yeah. And for their application, they wanted the amendment to increase the housing density and add a commercial business space. It would be one, it would be, it's my understanding, it would just be their office. That would be the only commercial use that would be there, be relocated to that site, which that site is just across the alley from where their office is now. So it's not going very far.
Okay, and then I'll ask the other one too. So would someone be willing to clarify, uh, the question that Ms. Dobbs had about what it's going to become and what, what is the ask?
That's clearly up to the applicant and those processes that, um, Senior Planner Castellano was discussing would vet out what would happen and um, there is an opportunity for it to be both residential and commercial. I think that's why this is an appropriate zoning designation for that location. So as of now, I believe the plan is to just move the office building, but it definitely allows for in the future for residential to be there as well.
Thank you. Alright, so do we have any other comments about this item? Yeah, so we'll close the club, uh, we'll close the public hearing, come back for comments and motions. Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Have any comments, I guess we can entertain those afterwards. So I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council to approve the general plan amendment petition for the property at the northwest corner of Fairfield and West Harris.
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion, further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I will go ahead and ask for a vote then.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Alright.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. This is extremely out of order, but I realized we didn't get to one of the questions about the amount of, um, units that could be um, constructed at the site. And so I would just encourage you to, um, reach out to one of us or to our city manager. We can make sure you get that information. Um, in fact, why don't I just write it down and kind of hand it to you? I forgot to ask that and meant to. So, um, I, I would say that that's a little further out in the process, but, um, but we still don't want to leave you hanging there.
And this is the amount that we, um, that is possible, but not necessarily what's been proposed because we don't have a proposal yet. Thank you, Councilmember Arroyo for doing that. And we did all vote. So, um, we will take a moment for you to go hand that to her. Um, and then we'll move on to the consent calendar. And actually, this is perfect timing because I do believe we needed to pull an item F four from the consent calendar. Cause Councilmember Arroyo will have to recuse herself. So at this point, um, thank you for sitting down again.
Well, I'll move the, oh.
Does anybody have any other items they want to pull from the consent calendar? Alright, in that case, we will invite you to take a little break and, uh, we'll.
Can I move the approval of the remainder of the items?
You sure can.
Whatever it was, F four.
Awesome. Okay, so we have a motion to approve consent calendar.
I'll second.
Alright, um, everybody can go ahead and vote on that, that item?
Aye.
Alrighty.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Mayor, I recall, um, that it was best practice to say why you're recusing yourself. So I'm recusing myself because I work at Redwood Community Action Agency, although I would not work directly on this project or benefit from it, but I'm still going to recuse myself.
Thank you very much. And as she leaves for a very, very short break, because it won't take us long, I don't think. And item F four is the Spartina removal for Elk River Estuary Enhancement Project. And, um, did anybody have any questions or anything they wanted to say about this? Councilmember Castellano.
I, I did have a question about this. Um, you know, I know Spartina is very invasive. I'm excited we're doing this and doing it, um, with, you know, manual and machine methodologies. Do you know about how often we will need to do this?
I don't have that. I, I do know that there's a maintenance requirement as part of this project, that it be maintained for a period of time. Uh, I don't know how frequently that'll need to happen, maybe.
Yes, I was a part of this project a long time ago. But based on our previous stuff, it's, it's a five-year monitoring plan. And there's a certain density that needs to be maintained in these areas and I don't, I know for the waterfront trail, I believe it was ten percent of the, of the area that you needed to keep it less than. I'm not sure what the exact, um, condition is on this, but I'm sure it's something similar than that because it was a part of a coastal development permit. Um, when we've done it previously for some of the mitigation areas that we're dealing with now, it's typically approximately quarterly, um, that they're out doing the work, but, um, it could be done at a higher frequency of that depending on um, where they're at. They have to do an annual report as a part of this, so they want to meet whatever threshold they need to meet. And so whatever frequency that takes to meet that threshold, they'll do.
Alright, any other questions? Since we did pull this item, I will go ahead and ask if anybody has public comment on this item. And I don't see any on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to council for, um, motion or discussion. Councilmember Bauer?
Oh, motion to approve F four of the consent calendar.
Alrighty, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, everybody vote.
Aye.
For yes votes, Councilmember Arroyo absent, motion carries.
You know, if that was a close vote, I could have had to vote, but. Can you please ask Councilmember Arroyo to come back? And, uh, okay, let me see. I was just wondering what time it was. Seven oh eight, and we're doing, we've got plenty of time to move on. It is so quiet. I kind of wish, uh, Director Gerbign was here so we could just, I don't know why, because we won't want you talking about it when Councilmember Arroyo comes back. So we'll just all sit here quietly. She truly recused herself because she, she can't hear or participate in the discussion in any way.
And she announced before leaving. I'm so, I'm so proud.
She'll be here in a moment.
Anybody like me to read the Wikipedia page on Spartina?
I am not opposed to that, Councilmember Moulton.
I were discouraged from asking basic questions. It's like, what is Spartina? Why don't I know this? Oh, it's an invasive grass.
Alright. And we are going to move on then to item G, which is our legislative action correspondence. And did anybody have any urgent legislative correspondence that we needed to um, discuss? Of since, no urgency? Right on. We will move on then to item H one, which is, well, items H under ordinances and resolution. H one is the Community Oversight on Police Practices Board. Oversight on Police Practices Board. That's the new name, huh?
That is the new name. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This item dates back pretty ways ago, all the way back in, I believe it was two thousand and eighteen, I believe, uh, ex-chief Mills had established a citizens advisory board. Um, was in place for a couple of years and then in about, um, approximately early two thousand twenty-one, council was more interested in seeing that board go in the direction of an oversight board. And so back in July of two thousand twenty-one, council directed staff to present information regarding, uh, citizens oversight board. And then on October fifth of two thousand twenty-one, staff came back with an amended, um, ordinance. We amended the citizens advisory board to kind of reflect the desires of what council was looking for. And then also discussed potential further changes for that. Um, at that council meeting, council directed staff to go back to, um, implement some of the, the other parameters that council was concerned with for the oversight board and also to, um, look into hiring an independent police auditor. And so staff went out and put out an RFP for an independent police auditor that would serve as an advisory purpose to this board. Um, and then in February of this year, council approved, um, uh, the city manager negotiated a contract with OIR Group to be our, um, independent police auditor. So once that independent police auditor was in place, uh, we worked with them as well as with, um, Chief Jarvis, who has a lot of experience in this area. And we crafted a new ordinance that was specific to an oversight board and decided to call it the Citizens, um, Oversight of Police Practices Board. And so in front of you now is that ordinance for introduction. Um, we incorporated, um, all of We incorporated all of the requests of council when this was presented back in October of 2021. And so we feel that it meets the desires of council. One of the areas that was requested to be added to the ordinance was a requirement for, at every meeting, to reserve a spot for community-based organizations to come and provide reports and information to the oversight board. Through the review of the city attorney, the independent police auditor and staff, we felt that that would probably be better addressed through the bylaws of this oversight board. And so once council approves this, we'll make sure that the bylaws incorporate an agenda item on each of the agendas for the oversight board, that there's a section for community-based organizations to have time to speak to the oversight board. So with that, council, staff is available for any questions from council.
All right, do we have any questions for staff on this item? Councilmember Moulton.
City manager Slattery, why? Why would that particular need be suited better in the bylaws than in the ordinance itself?
I can't give a specific reason to that, just other than that typically agendas are set through bylaws and not necessarily through the ordinance. I don't know if there's something the city attorney would like to comment on.
I think that it gives a little bit of flexibility around agendas as compared to being in the ordinance itself. Ordinances come before the council and are a little bit harder to change. So bylaws set protocols for boards to run their meetings and do their agendas. And those bylaws can be changed a little bit more easily, so that's one reason.
And who sets the bylaws for them?
So the board itself and the chair set the bylaws for, just like the other commissions, committees and boards that the city has. Obviously, there's input from myself, the police chief, the HR liaison, and the others that are involved in this ordinance.
So there's potential here for the board to decide that that is not an efficient use of their time and that they no longer want to meet with community groups?
Technically, yes.
I think one of the reasons we went with doing it in the bylaws was that if for some reason, you know, we didn't have a community group who was available to meet, we didn't want to not meet the ordinance or basically the law that surrounds the meeting. So we felt that by putting it in the bylaws, it gave specific direction, but we wouldn't be in violation of a ordinance should we not be able to get, you know, one of the organizations on board. Because things just happened and organizations were kind of at their schedule. So it was really about making sure that we didn't violate anything that we had set forth for ourselves.
Okay, so preventing schedule snafus from derailing the actual work of the board, which is to review police policies and practices.
Correct.
Thank you.
I will say that staff and myself, the police chief, the human resources director are all in full support of having as much input as possible and that having those community-based organizations as a part of this process is definitely one of those things.
Good, thank you for saying that. I agree, it's very important.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I will open it up to the public and ask if there's any public comment on this item. Any public comment on Zoom? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back for a discussion or motion. Councilmember Castellano.
Well, I was just thinking about councilmember Moulton's questions. And I definitely appreciate our staff's considerations around the problems of putting those kinds of mandates in the ordinance. But I'm wondering if, if putting something, you know, I see in the Purpose and Objectives section 33.207, number five, number six, there's a line that says building trust between the community and police. And then number seven, fostering strong police-community relationships and partnerships. I'm wondering if we would, could put something in there that would sort of, you know, within the ordinance itself, kind of frame the council's desire for that community participation in a kind of non-mandatory way, such as something like, you know, sort of like a 7B or something, like create opportunities for community organizations to give input or perspectives to police.
Councilmember Arroyo.
On a similar note, but a different, taking it in a different direction. I like your thought. I also, we have a lot of agendas where the agenda is set by ordinance, but, or by resolution, but that we don't fill every item. Like there's lots of times when we don't have a certain report or action item. I just don't think anything happens. So I'm not sure why this board would function differently. Like if we don't have an item, we don't fill it. Like for years, we had that, the prayer or the, you know, faith invocation, the faith-based invocation at the beginning of our meetings that we often didn't fill. And then finally decided to take it off the agenda, but at least created conversation like, oh, do we, do we still need and want that on the agenda? And in this case, if it was just a permanent item on the agenda and it was repeatedly not getting filled, perhaps that would flag it versus allowing that flexibility. So I feel like it's a bit of an academic pursuit to worry about it, like being always, always having someone in that spot. And you may as, you know, I don't really have a preference one way or the other, as long as the intent is understood that we want to hear community-based organizations, you know, interfacing with this board so that they hear from the community about the issues that are important. But I don't see why an agenda item can't just live there forever and only sometimes be used.
Kind of like our boards and commission reports.
I want to maybe jump in here and just say that while bylaws may be a little bit easier to amend, ordinances certainly aren't impossible to amend. So I think the council should feel confident that if the board isn't moving in the direction they think is necessary, you know, we can amend the ordinance. It's not impossible. I didn't mean to suggest that. And I think the board's probably getting, getting the impression of the council loud and clear right now as well, so.
I'm thinking that probably this discussion's not about this staff or this council, but about tomorrow's staff and tomorrow's council and the one we're not sure about. So that's what I'm guess, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
So I, you know, staff obviously will go any direction that council chooses to. I do think that what councilmember Castellano had brought up does codify the desire to make sure that community-based organizations are a part of this process. We could do it that way, or we could go and make it more official and say that it'll actually be an agenda item. It doesn't, you know, we can go either way. This is just the introduction. I don't think this would be considered a substantive change that we would have to reintroduce this again and we could adopt it at our next council meeting, correct?
I would agree with that.
So.
As amended.
Either way, it's fine for staff.
All right, so if somebody'd like to make a motion with an amendment to either one, councilmember Arroyo.
I move that we waive full reading, oh, yep, waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1012, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka Repealing Citizens Oversight Board Title III, Chapter 33, Sections 200 through 207, and replacing Title III, Chapter 33, Sections 200 through 208, Community Oversight on Police Practices, with the change discussed to adding to the agenda the item of the community organizations report. Does that work? Is that clear?
I'm going to ask the city clerk to nod if she got that for the minutes. Okay.
She's a superhero, she got that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councilmember Moulton. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, then everybody, we can vote.
Clearly, I'm a yes.
Wait, we have, oh. Curious, what are the, if it's not filled every month, what does that actually mean? What is that? I mean, is there some kind of, somebody going to come down?
It's not that it's going to be filled. It's, I mean, I would liken it to the legislative section that we have on ours. If we don't have something on it, it doesn't have it on there. At least if it's put into the ordinance, it'll be listed on the agenda and it'll be an opportunity for someone to speak even, you know, right then and there. So it doesn't have to be noticed or anything like that. It obviously could be noticed if, let's say, Black Humboldt or Central Deployable or NAACP wanted to pre, or basically get onto the agenda. It could be put on the agenda in that way, or they could just show up to the meeting and speak at the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, I support this, the intent being in the ordinance. So I think that's a good call. All right, now I think everybody's ready to vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. So now we are going to move on to item I, which has our reports and action items. And I'm going to ask city manager Slattery to introduce our presentation on Bird scooters.
Yes, so thank you again, Mayor and council. Tonight, we have Taylor Kenny, as well as, I believe, Michael Covelo. I don't see on the screen right now, but staff has been working with Bird for the last few months. And we've worked out a contract with them to provide a pilot program for a year to try out the Bird scooters in our community. And we have met with Main Street, provided input from Eureka Main Street, because that's where we see that area having the biggest use of these scooters. And we've discussed with them, there's concerns and had Bird scooters present to their Main Street board. And so here tonight, we have them here to present to council a presentation on the program. So welcome, Taylor, and welcome, Michael.
Thank you very much, city manager Slattery. Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening, members of council. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. As was indicated, I do have a short presentation that we can run through and be more than happy to ensure that we address any of the specific questions that any of the members of the council may have following this. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. As mentioned, I am Mike, or Michael Cabado. With me tonight is Taylor Kennedy. We are both with the Revenue and Partnerships team over at Bird. Bird is a shared electric vehicle company specializing in what they call micromobility. So those are those vehicle types best suited to the trips that are less than five miles, which is about 60% of the trips that we see within the United States. In particular, within Eureka, it would be probably closer to around 99% of the trips that you might see. We were first founded in 2017 and were the first company to introduce shared electric scooters to the world at large scale. Since then, we've expanded to over 400 cities globally and are the only dedicated micromobility company to be publicly traded on the New York Stock Exchange. Our mission is to improve the quality of life of cities by reducing traffic congestion, improving air quality, and providing affordable and reliable alternative transportation options. Way that our system works is very similar to some of the bike share systems you might already be familiar with. Individuals will download a mobile application on their smartphone. In most cases, we also have a text to unlock feature for those who do not have access to a smartphone. They will see one of our devices either throughout the community or using the map functionality on the mobile application. When they scan it to unlock for the first time, they will have to create an account, which includes a safety tutorial that teaches safe riding behavior as well as proper parking etiquette. Under certain circumstances, we can also require that new users pass a quiz to prove they actually have paid attention to that tutorial. They scan the device to unlock it, take it where they need to go, usually somewhere around 10 minutes away before hitting a button to end their ride. At that point in time, they are required to photograph the scooter to prove that they have parked it appropriately. Part of our technology includes a real-time AI feature that can detect whether a scooter is actually in frame within that photograph. So if an individual tries to pull a fast one, snap the photo of their feet, the system will actually kick them back and oblige them to actually take a photograph of the scooter itself. Once done, the ride ends, somebody else comes along, does the exact same thing. So it's multiple short trips per day per scooter. We have a number of different make models of scooters. All of them are designed in-house in our Culver City R&amp;D department. Every single one of which is equipped with a headlamp, running lights, taillights, as well as brake lights to ensure high visibility during low light conditions. We cap the maximum speed of the devices at 15 miles per hour, which is about roughly what your average amateur bicyclist travels at, to ensure that nobody's going at an undue rate of speed. Every single scooter is also equipped with eight bells that you can make an audible signal if you are passing someone on the left-hand side, similar to what you would do if you were riding a bicycle. I do want to draw your attention to the safety decal that you're seeing on the bottom right-hand side of the screen, which includes some reminders of some of the pertinent safe riding behavior that we want to remind all of our users about, as well as the 24/7 contact information that riders and non-users alike can use to get ahold of us, including an email address and telephone number. I do want to be very, very clear. We are not asking for any subsidy, any investment, or any financial commitment from the city or any other groups within Eureka for the introduction of these services. Functionally, what this is, is a public transportation network. We feel that given the analysis that we've done long-term, given the sheer volume of microtransactions, we can be profitable, meaning that we will not be requiring any subsidy from any party within the city of Eureka. Part of our process does involve introducing the city's administrative team to an account manager. With me tonight, that's Taylor Kenny. We'll be able to ensure that there are, there is a dedicated point of contact, the fine-tuning adjustments that might be necessary to the delivery of our services, such as alterations of our geo-fencing parameters. Those are the digital boundaries that control where the scooters can and cannot go, as well as some of the more pragmatic, or some of the more operational concerns, such as can we have additional scooters deployed in this area at this particular time? What we have found to be particularly effective is to actually partner with local members of the community, individuals that we call fleet managers, to take over the day-to-day field operations of the fleet. So that includes the deployment, the rebalancing, which is just a fancy word for moving the scooters from places where people have ended their ride, as well as the recharging of the scooters, as all of these are electric or battery power. What this means is that there are dedicated full-time individuals who will be ensuring that they are checking on every single active unit multiple times per day, usually once every couple of hours. This gives the city the confidence of knowing that somebody is going to be making sure that these consistently look good, are in locations where people are likely to use them, and can rapidly address any concerns if, for whatever reason, something ends up knocked down or misplaced. It also allows us to create some direct primary economic benefit for the community through small business creation that has no upfront costs, no fixed cost, no termination penalty. In terms of the impact that this can have, roughly, almost 60% of our trips do end in front of a small business. Our fleet managers in general take home a little over $70,000 a year. That is inclusive of areas where you have an oversaturated market, multiple competitors, et cetera. In an area like Eureka, where you have good weather pretty much year-long and no competition from other shared mobility providers, I do think there is the potential for it to actually be substantially higher. Finally, Emory University released a third-party study in 2021 where they found that over a six-month period, every single individual e-scooter contributed roughly $1,100 in additional spending at local businesses, particularly within the food and beverage industry, that otherwise would not have been spent. To make my math nice and easy, what that means is that over the course of a year, with a fleet of, call it, 100 e-scooters, that would amount to almost a quarter of a million dollars spent at local businesses that would not have been spent otherwise. So this can be a great thing to help stimulate the local economy and encourage individuals to take trips that they might ordinarily pass up. Because we were the first company in the world to introduce shared electric scooters, it has given us the most time to hone our technology. I've mentioned our geo-fencing and our geo-speed controls. Again, every scooter is equipped with a GPS device that controls where it is allowed to go through these digital boundaries, as well as what speed it travels at within particular locations. As part of our safety initiatives, we released the industry-first helmet cell. As part of our safety initiatives, we released the industry-first helmet selfies feature. So a way to incentivize, again, safe riding behavior. If an individual snaps photographs themselves at the end of their ride wearing a helmet, they receive a credit to their next ride. This is done in combination with an ongoing helmet campaign that we have throughout the entirety of the United States, where any of our users can request right from our company website or right through the mobile application to have a helmet shipped directly to their door for no cost other than $9.95 shipping and handling. Has a little bird logo on it, looks good, a little biased, but I think they're pretty cool. Finally, we have some extremely sophisticated parking management functionality, which includes, uh, allowing for, and preferred parking areas, incentivized parking areas, or even designated parking areas for special events and the like. What that means is we can encourage individuals to park within a particular location. If we've identified an area where it might be more appropriate to have scooters than others, we can even incentivize them by offering ride credits. And it, to be very cliche here, we prefer the carrot to the stick. Or finally, even simply just require them to go to a particular location. For example, if Eureka was hosting a street festival, or there was a parade of some sort, we could encourage individuals to go to a particular locate, or we could, uh, require individuals to go to a particular location to end their ride, to ensure the scooters don't end up in a location where they might present a bit of a nuisance. Simultaneously, we can also block off the area of that street festival or that parade using our geo-fencing controls, so that individuals are not able to actually take the devices through that, uh, that geographic location. On some of our make models of scooters, we do offer a feature that we call Warm-Up Mode. This is for new users who are not as familiar with our systems. It reduces the maximum speed of the scooter down from 15 miles per hour down to about 6 miles per hour, as well as the rate of acceleration, until they get a little bit more comfort and familiarity, at which point it gradually increases up to that cap. As a very large number of our, uh, our users are regular commuters, we, uh, introduced our Quick Start functionality. What this does is, based off of historic riding patterns, the system will know that an individual approaching a scooter is actually looking to unlock it without having to go through the normal flow, and will actually end their ride when they go to a particular location. They are still required to photograph the scooter to prove that they have parked it appropriately, but it takes some of that normal, uh, uh, interaction out of the way, simply because it already understands that this is somebody who sees this as their regular form of transportation to get to work, school, or any other destination that they might need to go to on a regular basis. Uh, that does segue very nicely to the real-time data dashboards that we'll be providing to the city. We will be providing access to all of this data in real-time so that the city can independently determine whether they feel comfortable or what the results of the, uh, the introduction of the system has been. So this includes number of unique users, total number of rides, average ride distance, heat mapping, start endpoints, number of, uh, regular commuters, and a whole bunch of other data. Uh, certainly, if there is something else that any of the administrative team is looking for, or any of the council is looking for in terms of the data that we have available to us, we can put together a report as well. As I mentioned at the start of this meeting, I do think it is very important to make sure that we are addressing the specific questions that might be coming up from, uh, this council or, uh, any of the city staff. We'll be more than happy to do so if, uh, appropriate here. Taylor, I apologize. Did I miss anything that you think should add?
No, no, I think opening up for questions would be great.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions right now? I know I have a, a couple. Um, who does the blocking for the parking? So if you can, and how often can they do, how can you change that?
When, when you say blocking, um, what do you mean by that? Do you mind clarifying?
When you can lock your car in only certain parking spots, and you were talking about for special events, you'd have to go other places. Who's going to be, like, setting those parameters? Is it somebody at Bird, or is it somebody in the city staff, or your tech people?
So that would be us here at Bird. That would be Ms. Kenny here. Just give us 24 hours' notice. We'll make sure that we, uh, we put together all the parameters. It's as simple as just pointing at a, a map and saying, here, here, and here. We can even provide some suggestions based off of some of our historic experiences.
All right. Um, other questions? Councilmember Royal?
Um, what's your experience with vandalism of the scooters? What does that usually look like, and how do you handle it?
Excellent question. So we have a catch-all term for scooters that get vandalized beyond repair, get stolen, go missing. We call it churn. Throughout 2021, that rate hovered between 0.42 to 0.44%. What that means is, for the size of fleet that we are looking at for Eureka, you might not lose a single device, uh, uh, throughout the course of the entire year. Crime rates do not correlate with our rate of churn. We also have a, a very sophisticated set of operational parameters that we have designed to help mitigate some of that risk. Certainly, I think we are, are not expecting anything undue within the city of Eureka.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi there. And I was at your, um, Eureka Main Street presentation, so I've been thinking about this a little bit. Uh, I brought it up then, but would it be possible to have a, kind of a bank of helmets at the visitor center that people could be alerted to when they get their scooters?
Great question. Taylor, do you want to take this one, or do, would you prefer me?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I know that Michael touched on it a little bit. We do have options such as free helmets, if a rider would like it, with shipping, or encouraging riders to wear helmets with our Helmet Selfie Program. If it is something where we could provide some helmets to the city, we would be happy to do so. Um, it's not something that we provide with the vehicles, but if there was a place where I could ship, let's say, 50 or 100 helmets, I would be happy to do so.
As Taylor mentioned, we can ensure that the visitor center is supplied with helmets and include within the local rules and regulations section of the onboarding flow within Eureka, find a free helmet at the visitor center.
Perfect. And then this might be a question more for staff, but this came up also at the Eureka Main Street meeting, and that was, um, if the uplift program could be one of the fleet managers, or if there could be a partnership through that.
So I don't know if Michael and Taylor are familiar with our uplift program. Um, I, I know right now they're under a contract with a fleet manager. Um, whether or not that comes up and expires, or whether or not we could work with that fleet manager to see if they would like assistance. I think it could serve as a job skills training opportunity for our uplift program, and I'm sure I could get the contact information for the fleet manager and have that discussion with them. Um, I think that we would be okay with, from insurance purposes and those type of things. So I think that that's definitely something staff can look into.
Thank you. That crossed my mind, too. Councilmember Bauer, and then Arroy, uh, Bauer, then Bergel, and then that's all. I don't see another.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I, I love the service and ridden them in Sacramento, and they're great. And I, I've actually bought one, but I, I'm sure I'll still use scooters when they come up. But, um, I, I think maybe you talked about the fleet a little bit. Maybe you said there's 100. I'm just curious, how many are we talking about for Eureka?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. So we are going to be launching with 100 vehicles. When we say 100, that number does fluctuate, right? Given how many are deployed on a given day, we'll be pulling them in and charging them, rebalancing and redeploying the vehicles. So you could expect to, let's say, maybe see somewhere between 65 to 80 out. That number, again, will fluctuate, but the city will have access to all that information and a live map of where those vehicles are and how many are alive at any given time.
During our initial rollout, we also only release a, a certain fraction of the scooters and gradually increase over time to allow the community to get a little bit more time to get accustomed to things.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bergel?
This might actually be a question for the city manager. So I'm curious, I mean, we had a lot of fun in Sacramento, um, but I do have concerns about where, um, the locations are that we could ride these scooters. I know that Waterfront Trail is non-motorized, so that doesn't sound like it would be a place to ride. And then also, um, in Old Town, with the roads being narrow, and I know you can't have bikes on the sidewalks, I'm just curious if you could give locations to where?
So these definitely can be used on the Waterfront Trail. Um, when we talk about non-motorized, it's combustion engines, um, they can. Um, staff is currently working with the subcommittee at HCOG to work on speed signage for consistency throughout the entire Humboldt Bay Trail, and that will be being implemented within the next couple of months. But they can be used on the Waterfront Trail. Um, these are supposed to be used just like a bicycle. Um, they're not supposed to be ridden on the sidewalk. They follow the same rules and laws and regulations as it relates to a bicycle. So, um, they are to be driven in, in the street and be treated like a bicycle. Um, the safety instructions that, um, Michael spoke of, um, talks, talk to that. And as we learn, if we have issues, that, that geo-fencing that they're talking about is an opportunity to, um, restrict certain areas. I know that when we were in Sacramento, some of us experienced the hardship of making it all the way down to Old Town, Sacramento, and finding out that not Bird, but another company that will remain nameless, required us to walk approximately a mile to close them out. And so I think that's some of the geo-fencing, uh, capabilities that they have.
And then who will be doing enforcement?
It'll be no different than bicycle enforcement, BPD.
Councilmember Royal?
Are there cities that you've worked with that have specific, um, you know, policies or ordinances or best management practices that they've implemented? Um, and are those tools that you could share with us for use designation of spaces, or is that something you just leave up to cities? I mean, I'm sure that you don't regulate it, but, but do you have examples that you could share with us?
I apologize. I'm not sure that I fully understand the question. In terms of use spaces, are you referring to designated areas where you would advise the scooters be parked at?
No, I mean, like, where they can be ridden. I mean, in line with Councilmember Bergel's question, you know, um, are there, are there examples, uh, like, where people are like, well, you can use, you know, you can use this facility, but not this other facility? And, you know, I'm not expecting Bird to create those, but if you've seen those in other cities that, um, we could, we could take a look at, that would be, that would be great.
Absolutely. Within the agreement that, uh, we have with the, uh, city of Eureka, we actually include a, a strong number of those best practices in terms of more the operational parameters. Uh, certainly, given how every city is unique, I think it is important for us to make sure that we are approaching Eureka from a, a fresh perspective and making the adjustments based off of some of the riding behavior once we see a little bit more of that transportation data. Uh, we are, as I mentioned, operational in over 400 cities globally, so we can take some of the experiences that we've had from 100 million-plus trips, obviously, uh, and make sure that we introduce, um, as much of that as possible to the, the implementation within Eureka. If I, if there are some specifics that you are looking for, I'm, I'm certain that we can put something together. I'm, I think, uh, at this point, it's probably just too broad for me to paint with a broad stroke and say this is definitively what we should do.
And I, I could add to that. I think that when we start working on that, you know, that kind of transportation statement and looking at some of the, um, projects that we have coming up that have been proposed, um, you know, we just received funding for our bike plan. Um, we're also looking at the Bike Boulevard on C Street, potentially the Bike Boulevard on M Street. When those type of projects come up, that's definitely an area that we can concentrate on and, and try and get people to use those facilities as there'll be lower-volume traffic, they'll be more appropriate for bike slash scooter riding. I think the huge opportunity for this is knowing that the data that Eddie Alexander has come up with, 90-whatever percent of those folks that are coming in from out of the area or going into the Old Town area, I think this is a really big opportunity to advertise the zoo and be able to find a safe route for people to hop on these scooters and go to the zoo and stay here for longer periods of time. I also see an opportunity, when the Waterfront Trail is complete, I believe the radius of these are 30 miles. Um, it definitely can be more than just the last mile. Um, with the Waterfront Trail in place, a student could be in Old Town and they could go up to HSU and come back on one of these bikes, and, excuse me, one of these scooters, um, and use it for transportation in that manner as well.
Councilmember Castellano?
Um, just real quick, uh, how long is the trial period?
One year. So it'll go to the end of the year.
What are those dates? It's the end of the year, it's not the end of December.
Sorry, December 31st, 2022.
Okay, so it's not a year, then. It's a, eight months?
Yes, staff got into this agreement early on, and, um, there was a timeframe that they needed to get a, oh, I'm forgetting the name of them. What do you call your local guy again?
Fleet manager.
Fleet manager in place.
Okay. Um, did you guys have all your questions? I'm gonna come back over here. Do we have any questions over here? Um, Councilmember Molton, do you have any questions? I don't see any.
Uh, no, I feel thoroughly informed and fascinated.
All righty, then we're gonna go to public comment. And I see we have a couple on Zoom, so we'll start with that. And Colin Fisk?
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Colin Fisk with CRTP. Um, I think that it's, uh, it's exciting to have more low-carbon micromobility options, um, coming available, but I do have a couple of questions or comments. Um, one is that I hope that this, uh, will not, uh, exclude us from continuing to pursue, uh, and coordinate with the city of Arcata and other partners on, um, a regional bike share system, because I think that, um, the more options we have in that regard, the better. Um, and second, uh, that the research shows that, you know, for these micromobility options to be, um, most effective at diverting car trips, they really need to be integrated with transit. And so I hope that the city will do whatever it can, um, to encourage and incentivize, you know, the, the integration of both this system as well as a bike share system with, uh, the transit system. And, you know, finally, um, my, my one sort of immediate concern is around the parking issue. And, um, my understanding is that the geo-fencing is not yet good enough, uh, you know, to, to be very fine-grained about where the parking is. So for example, you know, to differentiate between, you know, parking in a, in a parking space or parking on the sidewalk. And I think that, um, the city needs to, you know, figure out some method, if there isn't one already, um, for ensuring that the, the public, um, access on the sidewalk isn't blocked, particularly for people, uh, with disabilities, people who have, uh, vision issues, et cetera, where that can be a major issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Dalton Lee?
Hi, my name's Dalton. Uh, I'd like to urge the council to consider not using Bird Share scooter programs locally, and instead use what seems to already be here, uh, Arcata and HSU program with tandem mobility. Uh, I own and operate Wild Trail Tours. We offer biking and hiking tours, as well as electric and standard bike rentals. And although bike shares in my company platform overlap slightly, I don't feel any pressure by new endeavors such as a station-based bike rentals or scooters. I fully support it. Um, the introduction of a bike share and scooter program into this computer, uh, community, I think, should be tandem mobility, because they're already working with the city of Arcata and Cal Poly. Uh, the grant proposal by the Humboldt Transit Authority is coming up the end of this year, and I find it kind of, uh, interesting that that was also the initial time of this initial ti- uh, of their initial program that they'd like to try to instill. Um, this Transit Authority grant would be a huge boost to our intermodal transportation. And having something similar between Arcata and Eureka through something like tandem mobility, uh, would offer, uh, way more opportunity, like, uh, Colin Fisk mentioned, to, uh, give us the ability to see people travel between Arcata and Eureka. Let's continue to build Eureka and Humboldt County as a community that supports local, prioritizes safety, offers alternative means of transportation, I believe in Humboldt, and that will support a resource that reflects what the community needs, not what appears to be the easiest, like Bird. Uh, for cyclists, commuters, and families, whether locals are visiting, it's imperative that we make more trails, uh, that we don't get ahead of ourselves, and that the places to ride are there before we have a ton of things for people to ride, and, uh, that we connect people safely and support local industry. Once again, my name's Dalton Lee, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other public comment from, um, inside the building? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Steve Cavan, and I live on, I live in the harbor, uh, right next to the Wharf and Your Building. Um, I like the idea of, of there being scooters coming down to waterfront. Uh, that would, I, I share the concern, though, that, uh, if you've been down Waterfront Way, um, there's limited parking, and I'm not sure where you're gonna park the scooters if you want to stop off, uh, along the way. And, uh, I'd like to hear how that's gonna be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience or Zoom? If not, I will bring it back to council for, or, well, we don't actually, we're not making any decisions, because we already have a contract. So, any closing thoughts before we pass, move on to the next item? Councilmember Royal?
Um, so have we thought about designating any, um, you know, perhaps new temporary painted locations for, um, for, you know, scooter parking, or, you know, suggested locations that are a little bit more defined, um, through other means besides just besides just the geofencing?
Yeah, so you know, we discussed this with Bird, Michael and Taylor. And I think that the information that we get and gather from people as to where they're being used and the frequency of use is important to determine the best places for those. I would think that a lot of our sidewalks do have enough area for bike racks and we could do it by designating bike racks in certain areas and recommending that they get parked next to bike racks or other bikes are being, being parked as well. And we can look at designating areas with paint and those type of things. But I think having the data about their usage and where they're going is really important. I'd also like to talk about the bike share, city of Eureka, or the people who actually started that bike share program. And we were the first ones to be contacted by the company that previously had used those bike shares and worked with the co-op here locally and we had a set of those bike shares. That company since went bankrupt and we did not receive very good service from that company and they were taken over by another company. We would have continued that operation with them, but the co-op here in Eureka was not interested in that and we needed that as a partnership, but we fully intend to expand that. As a matter of fact, we've been working with Humboldt Transit Authority on trying to do the same thing with them at the H Street bus station for a long period of time. But we're hesitant to make sure that the company that they're currently work with, we want to be a part of that same company, but we want to make sure that we don't have the same experience that we had with the previous company. But that's definitely on our radar and we want to find as many different ways of microtransportation and alternative transportation for people.
City Manager Slattery, I apologize if I'm speaking out of turn here, but would it be all right if I provide some supplementary information as well? In speaking to the points raised by Mr. Lee and Mr. Fisk, we actually offer at no charge an integration with any local bike share services so that they can actually be seen through our mobile application as well. Help encourage multiple forms of, of alternative transportation. Almost every company offers an API, which is simply a piece of code that will allow us to show the location within our mobile application, given our user base, especially given our prevalence throughout. This can help encourage people to take some of these bike share options that might ordinarily be passed up. And again, that is at no charge to the provider and no charge to any other service.
Councilmember Royal.
Thanks. I, when I think about the messaging that people should park them at or near a bike rack, I guess I just would want to be sure that people are not obstructing the limited bike racks that we have, but that they would be, I mean, I, from the pictures and from my previous use of bird scooters, they stand up on their own, right? They don't need, they don't need to lean. So if we, you know, I, I, I think that makes sense. But there are, you know, I guess if we encounter issues, then I would be open to having, you know, sidewalk markings or something that allow people a little bit more information about where to park them. But it sounds like we can try it and find out.
Yeah, and I think my intent was to increase the number of bike racks that we have in town, cause I think that's necessary. And then adjacent to those bike rack areas, paint an area for scooters specifically and not use the actual bike racks. I apologize.
All right. I believe that is probably the end of the discussion, right? It's weird when we're not voting on something, I don't know how to end it. So thank you, thank you for your presentation. And we're looking forward to seeing some scooters. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you all so much for having us.
Alrighty, our next item is future agenda items. Do we have anything that anybody, Councilmember Castellano?
I was just gonna ask. I was just gonna ask for a five minute break.
Oh, do we? Okay.
Just a real quick one.
We're so close.
I know, just.
Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break.
Thank you.
We are now on to future agenda items. I heard this is gonna be a long one. So we will start with Councilmember Bauer.
No, I think a lot of our discussion, one of the first things I have, and I talked to, I think, Councilmember Royal about bike parking and the need to kind of, we need to figure that out. We need more, you know, places and, and so maybe that's a discussion for another time. But that would be great. And then what was the other one I had here? Oh, and kind of related is if anybody that went to Arts Alive saw how incredibly packed it was last time, the need to probably close the street down. If Arts Alive is, and that was a suggestion actually from some officers that were there. It was amazing how many people were there and I, I agree. We might have to close streets if we're gonna have an event like that and it'll be safer and even, even better. So just a suggestion, maybe we should be thinking about that in the future. I'll, I'll stop with that if other people.
I would love for us to have that conversation about closing the streets. We've been trying to have that conversation for years. So I would love to have that brought back.
Okay.
And I like your other thing too.
Councilmember Castellano, just, oh, just, we're okay with that.
Sorry, yeah, we need to get consensus, right? That's the idea.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
So how about, so bike parking first? I'd like to have that conversation.
Yes, I, I also want that. And I know we have a bike, we have, we got a, we got a big grant for a bike plan, but this could be its own thing.
And then Arts Alive street closures. Who wants that one? Okay, we're good on, on both of those. Thank you for bringing those to our attention. Any other agenda items that people, Councilmember Castellano?
I have also two. One is related to what the member of the public brought forward earlier, but it had been on my mind and that is just looking at the sewer ordinance in terms of point of sale, triggering that at point of sale, because it would give property owners different kinds of financing options as well as, anyway, I don't need to go into it.
I actually want to ask a question about that, cause I've been talking about it and I think we might have something else coming up soon. Should, is it a conversation we should have? Are we in the middle of something else that will change that conversation? And I'm looking, you're, we're making eye contact, Director Gerving.
I, I think Gerving has been through this before and when it was a point of sale, he understood what happened when it was a point of sale. But if that's council's direction, we can look at that again.
Oh, okay. I just, I was under the impression that there might be a bigger discussion going on that would.
There will be, yes.
I would be open to having that as a subtopic of a larger conversation.
Perfect.
How does that sound?
And I think just to understand, I, I'm kind of confused by it, just to understand what's going on. If that's an issue that's common, you know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Director, oh, you can't say anything, except for this is just about if we should have an agenda item about it. I'm just wondering about.
Maybe if I could offer an update on the sewer lateral ordinance, how implementation has gone and, you know, number of laterals that have been subject to it, that kind of thing might be constructive.
Okay, and then we could continue that discussion about whether to change it or not then. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. And the second one is, I think it would be any, maybe a report or something, but there's a lot of change going on at the state level in terms of mental and behavioral health and laws. And, you know, in terms of Laura's Law and Care Court, things, tools that are on the horizon. And I'm wondering, I would be interested in council receiving a report on those or an update so that we can understand how they might be implemented in our community.
The county does have a Laura's Law pilot program going right now, but it would be interesting to hear about how it's going.
Is the CARES Court, cause I have actually talked to District Attorney Fleming about coming and doing a presentation. Would CARES Court go actually through that? Okay.
It's still too early in the CARECARE Court being rolled out. It's like a governor's program with no legislative backing right now. So I don't think that they have an idea yet.
Information yet.
I think it might be too soon to get information about that, but we could try.
The Laura's Law we can discuss and we do have somebody from. On that note, I've been talking to the Humboldt Health Collaborative, which is a kind of a whole health collaborative for adults with special needs with some really interesting collaborative ways to help people through different systems by communicating with each other and sharing data, which is darn near impossible. And I was hoping we can maybe bring them as a presentation as well. I think that really fits those discussions. So. Anything else?
Sorry, I've been thinking a lot lately. One of the things, seeing our, what we just passed, which is a sizable amount of, of new paving and in the interest of, of recycling and reducing cost. I'd like to talk about, and I don't even know how it's done through ordinance or through policy, but increasing the recycling content on our paved roads. So like, I, I hear 25% is, is doable and it's actually cheaper because you use less resources, less oil to mix with your asphalt. So I don't know how we do that, but I, I think it would be a good discussion.
See, and it's heavily reliant upon the plant and its ability to do that. And so I think that we could, if council chooses to go in this direction, at least provide a report on the capacity of the plants that we have.
They can, so.
They, they may be able to can, it's a matter of will sometimes.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
It's not a big deal, it's just a.
How are we feeling? Okay.
Uh, okay, and maybe a couple more. The other thing I'd like to talk about, and this is a, a challenging one because we've, we've done this, but the six and V, the honey hole, really it's about Sixth Street, about restricting parking there. It doesn't seem, the problem doesn't go away. EPD has to spend an inordinate amount of time dealing with that. And people also use it to park and drop their trash off, their household waste. And so I want to explore whether we should do something about overnight parking or no parking at all from V Street to Myrtle or something. It just seems to be a hotbed of activity that taxes our resources, so.
Anybody else?
So I'm interested in hearing more about it. It seems like there's perhaps other streets nearby that would also be problematic though. So maybe it's a more comprehensive conversation about that part of town.
That's, I was wondering if it was less about parking, but parking being part of sort of that area and.
I mean, yeah, we could, it, it would, maybe it's more of a discussion about how much, how much time we're spending out there, you know, and resources. I mean, it's all wet, it's surrounded by wetlands that are either, have the, the photos, you know, sewers are, people's RV sewage is dumped in there, which feeds into our bay, you know, which feeds into the oysters we eat. They dump their trash and, and then they just set up shop and, you know, I, I mean, it goes along with the safe parking thing actually. And whether, you know, that's a discussion we haven't had in a while that probably needs to happen. So maybe that's a related thing.
I see Councilmember Molton.
Uh, where? Where exactly do you mean?
Six and V, so it's, it's right on the north end of town by, if you turn off in the first stoplight and you head towards the Office of Education and the Myrtle, Myrtle and what is it, West Intersection.
By the Raven Project, kind of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I know what you mean. I'm sorry, Six and
V.
V, do you mean?
V, sorry. Yes.
I was like, Six and V is where EPD is. Okay, thank you. Now I'm looking into that situation, sounds like a great idea.
Actually, and can I follow up and ask, we, you work, working on the safe parking, do we have that anywhere near coming to?
So the, the county, we, last time we spoke about it, it was discussions with the county. The county has recently put together some sort of guidelines, ordinances related to that. I don't believe it was approved, so staff can follow up with them and see where they're at with that. Staff did feel that county participation in a program would be important. And we have guidelines that, you know, draft guidelines on how they could be operated that has taken information from other communities that have successful programs. The main thing that staff is having a hard time with is finding operators. These are not successful without an operator and we've reached out to Arcata House Partnership. While interested, they wanted to see what kind of resources it was gonna take to operate the facility up in Arcata.
I don't, I don't know if we should talk about, I mean, you might be giving more information. I was just wondering if it's gonna be on the agenda in the next.
It, it will. I think we're waiting for things to pan out so that we can have better direction.
Okay, cause I knew it was, we got a lot of stuff here, so I was just wondering if it was already sort of planned for the next few meetings. All right, we have a lot of stuff here. I think this is the most. Councilmember Castellano, there's so much to talk about.
This, I've been pondering, I don't know, but stormwater capture, rain catchment systems and how that could positively impact our sewer system and as well as resource conserv- conservation.
All right. Does anybody, I'm writing down what all of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't get any really input on that one.
So I, I do feel like that was covered to some degree in our capital improvement program with some of the stormwater planning in there. But I'm open to hearing more specifics about it. I also just wanted to give a loving reminder to my peers that we are having, in two days hence, we will be able to talk about things we want to add to our city vision. So maybe some of these things that we're not exactly clear on tonight, we could talk about at that meeting. I'm just sensing that we all have a, maybe we're feeling invigorated by our city visioning. Anyway, I'm interested in hearing more about stormwater. I'm always interested in hearing more about stormwater. But I do think the trash racks and some of the other things were, were part of the capital improvement program, but definitely open.
Okay. Anything else? I'm writing all of these down in case you didn't, you got them too? Excellent. All right, then we will move on to the city manager's report. And City Manager Slattery, I will let you introduce our transportation safety, I believe you're talking about.
Yes, tonight we have from his garage, it looks like, Special Project Manager and engineer, Traffic Engineering Manager, Scott Elsmore, affectionately known as Sellsmore, is gonna be giving us a report on basically how traffic determines locations for stop signs and based on traffic accidents, those type of things. So welcome, Special Projects Manager, Elsmore.
Uh, hi, good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. And yes, I am, I am calling in from my garage. So I apologize if there's a little echo. Um, let's see, I'm gonna share a screen here. Let's see if I, give me a second. Okay, so can you guys see my slideshow?
Yes, we can.
Okay, here we go. So yeah, so tonight I want to talk about traffic collisions. And you can see I kind of crossed out the word accident there. We, we don't use that term accident because, because they're not. They're, they're, for the most part, they're correctable or they, they're, they're human error for the most part. So we, we talk about, we do kind of an annual wrap up every year at the Transportation Safety Commission to talk about annual collisions, so how our collision numbers are trending, you know, every year. That's kind of what this presentation is. I included also some longer term. You know, we kind of like to take a look at like a 10-year vision of, of traffic collisions and as well as like a five-year window at traffic collision. So. vision of traffic collisions and as well as like a five-year window at traffic collision. So traffic collisions are an important, it's an important metric for us to take a look at. It's one way, we have a few different tools, but it's one way for us to take a look at an intersection, a corridor, you know, a specific location, say, okay, what's going on here? Is this, are we all of a sudden having collisions that didn't occur? Are they similar? We, you know, look at that as data for, sometimes in grant applications, they want to, you know, for safety grants, granting agencies a lot of time want to see that a location has collisions, and then what the engineering fix that we're asking dollars for will solve those types of collisions. So, so we use it in a number of different ways, and so it's definitely important data. So, these first couple of slides, there's a lot of information here, so I'll kind of bounce through it, and we can, we can come back and you guys can ask specific questions, but so this kind of the beginning here is kind of a higher level. So what this graph is showing is a collision trends for essentially a ten-year window. So we're looking at, have a longer, longer-term look there. And so I have to start out and say, there's a caveat, so if you can see my cursor on the screen, and you'll see a big, big jump, so this red line is total collisions. You'll see a big drop in right around two thousand fourteen-ish or so, and so just as a caveat, what happened in that era was the city lost PSOs, which are Public Safety Officers, and they were, they took a bulk of the, what we call non-injury collisions, and so they were just, you know, fender benders or, you know, stuff where people didn't get hurt. So when we look at a ten-year period and we look at specifically this period, you'll see a drop in the, the total collisions, which are, it's a tip, it's a drop in the, in the non-injury collision. So we just have to kind of understand that in the data. So if you look a little lower, you'll see the orange trend line, and that's injury collision data. That's not affected by that, that change, that little blip. Injury collisions are, they're taken a report on regardless. So typically when we take a look at, when we're looking at collision data for whatever, whatever engineering type solution we're looking at, we typically focus on injury collisions because those are the ones, injuries and fatalities that we want to address first, they're the most serious, and, you know, the baseline data we have on them is much more uniform. So looking at the injury collisions, the orange line, you can see in the last ten years, there's a general trend down. So you can see in two thousand twenty-one, we had about a hundred and forty-eight collisions, whereas three years previously, we had a hundred and ninety-seven. So we're trending down. It's generally, over a ten-year period, it's generally going in the right direction. So that's a, that's a positive takeaway. This, this little bar graph here is, is looking at smaller windows, so it kind of gets past that, that little blurb of, you know, the, the non-injury collision. So this is showing, again, the last five years from about two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, and you see a general trend in, in both total collisions, which is the purple line here, as well as our injury collisions, which are red, trending down. Fatal collisions, I will note those, you know, they're a small numeric number, so when you look at them statistically speaking, they bounce up and down a little bit, so we generally lump those in with injury collisions and try to look at those as a general trend. It's, it's a, it's a better way to kind of understand what's happening with them. This graph is, let me back up one. So everything we're talking about so far is collision data for the city of Eureka, so it's everything within the city. It's including Broadway, Caltrans, Fourth and Fifth Streets, any of the state highway stuff, it's anything within city limits. So it includes all of those facilities. And this as well. So this is looking at a big picture of about ten years for pedestrian and bicycle data. And so again, these are, these are trending in a similar fashion. So if you look at a ten-year history of pedestrian collisions, they're trending down. Where in two thousand eleven, we had about thirty-four in a year, and two thousand twenty-one, we're down to two thousand twenty-two. So you can see that's trending. That's trending in a positive direction. Bike collisions, which is the blue line here, again, long-term over ten years, definitely trending in a positive direction. So tho- those are, those are positive takeaways, hopefully from all the hard work that we've been doing as a city. So those are things we like to lean on a little bit. So here, here's a kind of a part, when I started to put together this data, we have, you know, we have a couple of different sources for collision data, and there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of way for us to query the data. So, you know, you could query by, give me every stop sign collision that happened at five PM on a rainy evening by somebody who was thirty-two years old. So we, we can pull all kinds of unique, neat data. So if I started to pull this, this data together and started to look at trends, a couple of things jumped out at me, and I will, we'll kind of talk about those here. And it's not necessarily, you know, I don't, I'm not here to put, put the, play the blame game per se, but some of the information kind of jumped out at me, and as far as like when I started running by some of our colleagues and our Transportation Safety Commission, we were really kind of, you know, it struck us quite a bit. So what you're seeing here on the screen is high incidence collision data locations, and so this is for, I basically just pulled three years, and our query or our search tool was, give us locations that have high incidence. And so high incidence locations are a way for us to kind of do a quick look and say, hey, what intersections are having a bunch of collisions? Like, and is this different from the year previous? So is this something new? Is there a branch going in front of a stop sign? Is there a traffic signal that maybe is not being able to be seen? So this is an interesting way to, to look at those hotspots per se. So what you'll see here is basically three little tables, and what we did is, as I highlighted in in yellow there, the intersections that were state highways, so Caltrans oversight, because they started to jump out at me as a high percentage. So when you look here, for example, two thousand nineteen of the top ten intersections, quite a few of them were, were Caltrans facilities. Look at Henderson and Broadway, R and Four. And then if you start to work your way around, twenty twenty, top ten locations, eight of them were on the state highway. Twenty twenty-one, it looks like about seven were on the state highway out of about ten. So it started to jump out as like, wow, we do have a high percentage of collisions that happen, that occur on the state highway, and what is the percentage, or how does that, how does that fit in a little bit? So we'll get there in a second. So this is another way, this is that same information of, show us the high incidence locations. This is lumped over about a five-year period. So we, we popped this up on a map just so we can kind of understand what, what's occurring out there. So you'll see some trends here where we see on Broadway, quite a few hotspot locations, you'll see Fourth and R Street. You also see a few in the city over a five-year period, Henderson and E, Harrison F, which we've had a number of collisions over the years, Sixth and E, Seventh and H as well. So kind of going back to that Caltrans data to try to put into perspective of what is the impact of some of those Caltrans collisions, and so the cleanest way for me to kind of explain what that impact is, on the left-hand side here, you'll see a pie chart. And so within the city of Eureka, we have approximately one hundred and fourteen centerline miles. And so if you were to to draw a line down the center of a roadway, city street, and measure it, that would be a centerline mile. So it's a way to kind of, to understand, a lot of our funding sources are based on centerline miles of a city or a county or whatever else. So it was one way for us to compare it. So within the city as a, as a whole, the city has about a hundred and fourteen centerline miles, and then Caltrans, Broadway, Fourth, Fifth, a little bit of R Street, has approximately, right about ten and a half miles, ten point eight miles. So if you were to look at that as a whole, the state highway facilities make up about nine percent, a little less than nine percent of the total miles in the city of Eureka. So based on that, I try to kind of compare some of these collision numbers based on that. So you'll see the next slide over, you'll see, this is city total collisions versus state highway total collisions. And so you'll see here of that nine percent of road miles that the state highway maintains, it accounts for approximately twenty-nine, almost thirty percent of the total collisions within the city. So definitely out of balance. These, this slide is injury collisions and fatalities. So again, upper left-hand side, you'll see just the refresher of the, the centerline miles. Upper right-hand side, we see city injury collisions versus state highway injury collision. So again, thirty-three percent, kind of an unbalanced number. As you start to scroll down to the left, you'll see fatalities. So city fatalities versus state highway fatalities. State highway fatalities make up almost sixty percent of the fatalities within the city. So again, pretty unbalanced number. Gets even more striking here. So bike, this is bike collision. So the upper right-hand side is overall bike collisions within the city. Of those total bike collisions, thirty-three percent occur on the state highway, and sixty-seven on within the city rideaway. When it comes to fatalities, it's quite striking. You see eighty-three percent of the fatalities are occurring on state highway. And then the last one in this comparison slides are pedestrian collisions. So upper right-hand side, you'll see of the pedestrian collisions that have occurred in the last ten years, forty-seven percent occurred on the state highway, and of pedestrian fatalities, almost seventy percent, sixty-eight percent occurred on the state highway. So, these are striking numbers, you know. I would say what I've seen with, you know, the city and Caltrans relationship in the last few years, I think it's been very productive. I think the, the city as far as council and staff beginning to kind of lean on Caltrans and really encourage them to, to, to think outside of the box. I think those solutions of, of, I think things are getting much better. So I, I think it's, it's just something we have to realize is, we, there's two sides of the coin there, and I think as a city, we need to keep working with Caltrans and trying to encourage some improvements out there while we do the same thing within the city. And we've done, I think, you know, as a city, a really good job of prioritizing some of these goals over the last five or ten years or so. So that aside, the Caltrans stuff aside, I wanted to separate and kind of pull out, you know, because we have a lot of questions about, stuff about collisions within the city, where are we seeing them, what types of things are happening? So what we're seeing here is, this slide is, is talking about collisions, high incidence locations within the city for last year, for two thousand twenty-one, without state highways, so we're going to ignore the highway stuff. So again, you can see, these are locations we're all fairly familiar with, right? Seventh and H, Fourteenth and H, Seventh and I. So these top five or, top five or so are signalized intersections, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes, and a number of those other ones are signalized as well. So you can see in two thousand twenty-one, the higher incidence locations are in the neighborhood of about four per intersection, which is a little bit, I would say it's definitely lower than the last couple of years. We've had some that are in six or seven, but so what do we do when we see a high incidence location? So for us, one of the things we start to take a look at is, is when we look at collision reports is, we, we try to read the collision report and try to understand, they all tell a little bit of story. So, you know, people try to ask us, tend to ask us, well, what kind of collisions are you seeing out there? Well, when it comes to signalized intersections, they're typically red light violations are very common. So what I did here, there's a lot of information on this slide, and I'm not going to go through every one, but what I did basically is, I, those top five locations from last year, H and Seventh, Fourteenth and H, so what I did was I just, I pulled each one of those out, and I, I added the collisions that occurred and kind of what the collision fault or what occurred at those locations. And I want to touch on a couple that are, that are, will bring some interest to you. So, so here is two thousand twenty-one, I Street at Seventh, collision number three, here's, here's what happened in that one. And this is quote, the I Street driver who was at fault, the dog jumped into the driver's seat and distracted the driver, causing the collision. So that was, that was one kind of a head-scratcher. H and Seventh Street, the Seventh Street driver, quote, did not realize there was a traffic signal, and all of a sudden there was a loud bang. H Street at Fourteenth, the driver's foot stuck under the brake pedal, they ran a red light, caused the collision. So I'm cherry picking a little bit, but these are a few of the collisions that, that pop up from time to time, and we kind of scratch our head with, and we say, well, there's no real obvious answer on how to fix a few of these. And so these are types of collisions that we look at and say, okay, well, this is part of the broader picture. We need to try to improve education and getting folks to, to take, you know, driving a little more seriously. So but this is a little bit of a window into what we do when we're looking at an intersection that has, you know, high incidence or a number of collisions. We'll go through and take a look at the collision reports and try to understand what direction was the driver going, what did they see when the collision occurred? What, what is something we can improve on? We'll go out into the field and say, okay, is, is this direction, you know, lacking as many signal indications as the other direction? So just, just kind of a window in some of the things we, we look at. So another location that we've been, that's had a lot of interest in the last year per se, I would say, is the intersection of Hodgson and H. And part of it is, we put, you know, part of our, our large pedestrian safety project, we installed boldouts at Hodgson and H in two thousand twenty-one. And I would say it was, it was one of the first locations that we installed boldouts, and we'd had a number of complaints from, from folks in the past about potential for collision or lots of folks crossing there, and so it was one of our higher priority locations to install them, and it was one of the first locations, and so it brought a lot of interest in the public because that was, it was definitely new to them. So there was a number of collisions out there that happened, and, and, and a lot of people reached out and said, oh, are these part of, because of the boldout or what was occurring? So what, what we did here, or what I did here was to pull out just kind of a little bit of history of the intersection of Hodgson and H, and looked at what's been happening over the last few years. And in two thousand nineteen, there was one reported injury collision where a driver pulled in from another driver, it's kind of a driver error type issue, along with one, what we see in, in the records is a non-injury reported collision. So from time to time, if there's injury collisions that are somewhat minor or non-injury, the police will typically turn those away as, handle civilly, you know, trade, insurance and registration, those types of things. So you'll see a couple of these pop up as non-injury, non-reported, those are typically what happened there. So twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, we didn't have any collisions. Then in two thousand twenty-one, we installed the boldouts, crosswalks, signage, new striping out there. So we add those improvements, and pretty soon afterwards, we had a collision, an injury collision, and the, which, you know, we were, okay, what happened? So as per the collision report, driver one, who came to, to stop on Hodgson Street, pulled through the intersection, D one's dog began to get loose in the car, which caused D one to become distracted, thereby causing a T-bone collision, and the driver ended up on top of the boldout. So it was one that we kind of scratched our head about, but we could look at and say, okay, well, you know, the boldout definitely didn't cause this one. That's a hard one to fix, you know, when it comes to those types of things. So again, bit of a frustration, but, you know, another, another way we look at these intersections. I touched on this a little bit earlier, high incidence locations, you'll see, you know, in the top ten or fifteen high incidence locations in two thousand twenty-one, and I would say this would be somewhat common, is that they're signalized intersections, and why is that? Well, signalized intersections carry typically higher volumes of traffic. There's a reason we have traffic signals there, right? You're trying to manage high flows on multiple directions. So signalized intersections require, you know, multiple decision-making situations, as well as decisions being made on every, every entering leg, right? At a stop sign, the person entering the stop has to make a decision, but the person on the through street doesn't really have to make a decision. So at a signalized intersection, there's more decision-making, so more points of conflict that can occur. And again, at our traffic signals, the leading cause of collisions are typically red light violations. So to move away from vehicle, high incidence locations, I want to talk about pedestrian and bicycle high incidence locations, because those are obviously important as well. And tip, you know, the, the thing with bicycle and pedestrian collisions is typically they have much higher rates of injury and fatality because, you know, pedestrians and bicycles are obviously much more vulnerable. So one of the things we look at and we're, we're trying to look at grant funding or intersections as well is take a look at high, high incidence locations, what's occurring out there, where can we, where can we apply, whether it be boldouts or light crossings, where, where we take a look at some of those engineering fixes. So this is a snapshot of the last three years, and so when we did the search on these, we said, bring up every high incidence location, which would be a location with greater than one collision in a year. So, and again, this kind of leads back to earlier we talked about, of these three years, two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thousand twenty-one, there were a number of intersections in town that had quote-unquote, high incidence, so more than one, they were all on Caltrans facilities in this, in this timeframe. You can see those Broadway, you know, Fourth and Fifth, again, areas where you have high pedestrians, but also high volumes of traffic as well. Again, this is just that same information, but, you know, put on a map, so you kind of idea, have an idea in, in the city where those are popping up. Same information you can see on Broadway there and Fourth and Fifth. So then to separate, you know, Caltrans away and say, okay, where are we having high incidence locations within the city? Well, we didn't have any in two thousand twenty-one that were greater than two, so it's like, okay, well, let's see where we, where are, where are the top ten locations that had one? And so you can see these popped up, Del Norte and C, Dawson and C, Harrison Elizabeth, and so, you know, with this data, there, I would say somewhat random locations, we took a look last year, and I don't think any of those came up two years in a row. So so it's, you know, when you start to see this, this information, you start to think, okay, well, so if we're not having, you know, and if you look at these couple of two years, and you look at both pedestrian as well as bikes, or as well as vehicle collisions, it's like, okay, we're, we're not having, you know, extremely high incidence at certain locations, so does that change the way? So does that change the way you look at safety and engineering or, or moving forward to do improvements? And it kind of does. So in, in a typical situation where you're seeing, um, um, you, you look at two different ways. You look at systemically, which is kind of big picture, or you're looking at traditional site-specific safety approaches. So if we're looking at a, at a timeframe where we have an intersection with multiple collisions and you would probably get into that intersection and say, okay, let's see what these specific collisions are, let's try to fix those. And we're not seeing that in the last year or two. We're seeing less of those hotspot collisions, but we're seeing more spread out collisions throughout the, the, throughout the city. So the way those are approached is a little different. It's called, you go through a systemic approach. So a systemic approach is considers multiple locations with similar risk characteristics, selecting the preferred countermeasures for widespread implementation. So in a nutshell, you start to look big picture and say, okay, well, we had 10 locations that are crosswalks that are within, you know, uh, four blocks from a shopping center or school district. Okay, let's look at those as a whole and see if we can start implementing improvements to those as a whole. And that's what we've kind of done the last couple of years, the last number of projects. So that kind of leads and, and we're kind of wrapping it up here, but it leads into some upcoming projects as well as kind of touches on some previous projects. So, um, one of the projects we just completed was our pedestrian safety project that, um, was a, um, uh, accepted by council tonight. That was our pedestrian crossing improvement, H SIP, the Highway Safety Grant. And that was a million three of bulb outs at a number of locations. And so those were all high pedestrian use locations, near schools, near parks, some of them had collision locations. So it was more of a systemic approach to say, all right, let's look at these areas that are having, um, collisions or have crosswalks with, with people using them and try to apply, um, improvements to those ahead of time. And, um, and that's relatable to some of our upcoming projects. So for example, um, the H and I corridor multi, more, if I could speak, multimodal corridor improvements, which includes, uh, buffered bike lane, bulb out, sidewalk improvements, new crosswalks, pedestrian activated signage, radar feedback signs. That's a very large project that covers, uh, from essentially Fifth Street to Harris Street on H and I Streets. And that is a systemic. So we're not just saying, you know, this intersection, we're going to do this, that we're, we're looking at it as a holistic way and say, okay, we're going to try to improve this corridor as a whole and, and improve as many different crossings and, and, and facilities we can. Uh, the Sixth and Seventh Street Corridor Project is, is, is the same, same basic project. So it's, um, bulb outs, sidewalks, new crosswalks, pedestrian activated signage, radar feedback signs. And that's another, uh, Highway Safety Grant that we received is for, um, 18 locations, I believe, on Sixth and Seventh Streets. So it's basically from Myrtle Avenue all the way to Commercial Street. So similar, uh, systemic approach, those improvements. Um, some additional upcoming, uh, projects is, is City Manager Slattery talked about is, uh, we were just awarded within the last couple of days, a pretty substantial, uh, sustainable communities grant for planning grant for a bike plan. Um, and so this will help us, uh, uh, develop a cohesive, defined and connected multimodal network throughout the city. So we'll start working on that this summer and that'll help lay the, the, the foundation, the groundwork for, um, extending that, that network and building on to and adding all of these, all these projects like we want to do, like C Street Bike Boulevard and M Street and all those ones. Um, kind of another related project is, um, a signal communication and operations software upgrade. So, um, trying to improve our, our communication with our signals out in the field so we can upgrade timing, um, you know, upgrade operations, improve safety and be ready for some of those future tech upgrades. There's a lot of stuff coming out there with, um, autonomous type vehicles that, that, you know, we want to be ready for when that stuff starts to happen. So, um, last slide is, um, future collision or future projects. And so, um, we talked about some of these high incidence locations and so what are we doing with all of that data? Um, so a lot of these we're trying to, to weave into future grant funding projects. So, um, we look, we are going after a Highway Safety Grant for improvements on the E Street Corridor. So Henderson and E, Harrison E as well as Fourteenth, Sixth and Seventh. You know, we've seen, uh, high collision rates at Henderson E over the years and we have some improvements to the signals, um, that we think will improve, uh, a bunch of those intersections along E Street. So, uh, that's a, a project I think we'll have a good chance of, of, of being successful at. Uh, Boone and S Street Signal Improvements, we're looking at, uh, doing some improvements there as well with some, an additional turn lane, helping out the pedestrian signal phasing. So that's a, a project we're going to go after grant funds as well. Um, we've been successful with pedestrian crossing improvement projects. And so I, I think we'll be going after a similar kind of systemic approach where we're looking at adding more improvements, uh, throughout the system. Um, a couple of other projects out there, obviously I think we all know about, it's the Beta Zoo Trail. I think those are all great improvements. Um, the C Street Bike Boulevard Project, which I think is a, a great project and I hope we can get funded one way or another. Um, and then a safety campaign. Um, I know the H cog and the city and the, and the counties that have worked together on a safety campaign recently, um, uh, Public Works partook a safety campaign five or six years ago. And I think when we look at a big picture improvements to safety, I think safety campaigns are, are a part of that, right? I mean, it's not going to be the thing that fixes everything, neither is engineering. It's going to be, it's a part of a, a bigger solution. And I think it's been a few years since we've done a, a, a targeted safety campaign. And so we're looking at a way to, um, see if we can find a funding source to, 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 to go after another safety campaign. I think it's just something we need to do every few years just to, to, to reinforce some of those ideas and try to attack it at a different level. So, um, so that's it. That's a lot of information. Uh, feel free to have me go back and look at stuff or ask questions or anything else and I'll, I'll throw it back to, back to you guys.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited for this. I know it's the last thing on the agenda. You guys probably want to leave us so much. Um, I, I did mention I was walking on Hodgson today, going door, or this last weekend, going door to door, putting the watch the road signs in people's yards. I think you did a, a speed study last week. It seems like some folks saw you out there doing it. So there was not a single person who did not talk to me. You know, when you, when you're canvassing, there are a lot of people who don't have time, but they all had time to talk about how dangerous Hodgson was. So it's really interesting to see there are no actual incidents reported on Hodgson. They weren't really on any of your lists. I will say that, um, the bulb outs on Hodgson and H Street, the woman who lives there was so grateful and talked a lot about, um, how mirrors are not getting knocked off the side of their cars anymore because people were cutting those roads too small and they kept knocking mirrors. And people are like parking on the sidewalks to avoid people doing that. Um, and I've been thinking about when we talk about crime, you know, if crime's going down and it's not major assaults, it's not as bad, but incessant petty crime is what wears people down. And I think it's this incessant speeding and tiny accidents that we're not reporting that are just wearing people down. Um, so I think that's what I'm hearing and getting from those folks on Hodgson is just this exhaustion from, from that. And so the stuff you're doing is fabulous. I'm just giving you my feedback because I've had a lot of it lately and I'm going to continue to go, um, walk that neighborhood so we can see if our safety campaign is making any difference at all. So, thank you. Same by y'all, Councilmember Castellano.
Thanks for all the details in the report. I noticed, um, though in 2021, that, that last chart where you showed kind of high intensity areas and that there's, there are only kind of like one in, in various spots, um, in, in the city. But I noticed that of the 10 or 11 that were on that list, three were on C Street, at least two are on Wabash, I can't remember. So is that ever something you look at where maybe there's not one spot, but maybe there's a street where people are all going really fast? Or, you know, something that maybe it's kind of the overall behavior on that road that's causing collisions, but not one specific spot? And I am glad to see that maybe the C Street Bike Boulevard might help address that, but also just like what about, you know, I, I know that people use C Street as kind of a cut through sort of street.
Yeah. So no, a couple of things there for sure. We, we, yeah, absolutely. So we use all that to help paint the picture. Um, when, when you start to take a look at a street and you see three locations on a street having high incidence, yeah, absolutely. That's when we start to go out and take some additional traffic counts and, and start to read the collisions and see what's going on. And yeah, I agree that, you know, C Street is an important street because it is used as, as, as a cut through in a sense. It's a very long, direct route, but, and that's part of the reason that's attractive for a bike boulevard. Um, having those streets that connect through without, you know, a ton of stops are, are very preferential to, for bike boulevards and make them, you know, easier for folks to, to use. And, um, that project specifically, we have some really nice improvements, um, designed for the, the C Street Bike Boulevard for once it gets, um, funded, including, you know, for example, some islands, a few chunks of, of one way to help mitigate some of the traffic flow. But, um, I think C Street could be a great, great project and, and I, I think we'll find funding for it in the next few years, uh, likely.
Any other questions or, that's Councilmember Royal.
I, I live on C Street and, um, there are a lot of, there are a lot of, um, I guess one of my questions, I have a couple of questions. One of them was, um, is there any way that you are aware of to document close calls from motorists? I know street story is like close calls or places that people feel unsafe as bicyclists and pedestrians, but, um, you know, I would say that my experience, um, in Eureka is largely comprised of close calls and, um, and especially a lot of them, you know, miles. Um, especially a lot of close calls, you know, kind of right, right near my home. But anyway, are there, are there ways to, that people could document, um, that experience?
Yeah. So there, there's a couple of different ways and, and you touched on street story and that's an important one. And, um, that's, that's something that it's, um, it's tough, right? Because a lot of our funding sources are based on they want to see collisions that occur and, and, and we never like to say, well, if there's no crashes there, we can't do anything. And that's definitely not the case. And so what we do is with these, um, like our last pedestrian crossing project, we're able to get the funds by having a number of locations that had collisions. And then we're able to add locations that didn't necessarily have collisions, but either we got calls about them, we know that there's high pedestrians, you know, we know there's a high pedestrian usage out there, or it's just from kind of past experience, hey, we know this is a route on at school. So I would say for folks, you know, street story is a good way, you know, you can go online and find street story and, and, and notate locations where you've had a close call and we kind of, we will, we will just kind of query that data and start to, to, to plug it away in locations and say, okay, here's a bunch of calls about this. We're not having collisions here documented, but how else can we try to, try to add this to a project? Maybe we're doing some paving out there and we can add something on to it. So there's a couple of different ways to do it. Calling us and, and, and talking to us at City Hall, that's great too. People call us all the time and we get a chance to say, okay, when are you seeing collision or when are you seeing issues? What time of day? What's going on when you're seeing the issue? And so it kind of helps us paint the picture of what's going on. So there's a couple of different ways, but you know, reach out to us or street story. And just because we don't have a collision report doesn't mean we can't do something. Um, that collision report helps, but, um, there's a few other avenues that we, we use to help kind of paint that full picture.
Okay. Yeah. I, I think the bike plan is a great opportunity for whatever that public engagement looks like, to ask people to kind of gauge their level of comfort at certain intersections or like what, what seems, um, you know, uh, you know, basically be applying that street story approach, but to, um, you know, to the planning effort. Um, I guess in line with my close calls question is, um, are signs, um, that indicate, that tell you things like cross traffic does not stop or left turn yield, you know? And when I think about Henderson and E or a lot of the, um, the named streets that, um, come into C Street where it's, you know, one person has a stop sign and others don't. Um, do you find that that kind of like informational signage that tells you what's happening with the other, the other drivers, um, is, is helpful? I don't know what the data shows on that.
Yeah. Yes and, yes and no. Um, that's, if, if there's a changed situation, it for sure, it, it's, it's one of those, if we change something, we definitely add the sign out there and, and it's, it's, it's helpful. Um, signs are one of those things that are a little hard to, to see if they're that helpful because what happens is they tend to blend into the background after a while. So it's a little bit hard to say. There are some, um, when you talk about those types of signs, there's some studies out there that show, you know, for example, um, intercept, like pedestrian crossing intersections where they add a sign opposed to not sign, they'll see like a, I don't know, five to seven percent increase in yielding for pedestrians. So in some of those cases, there's definitely, you know, an improvement. Um, that's, signs are a cheap, easy solution. So when we go look at an intersection that's having some issues, that's one of the first things we look at because we can go throw a sign up there within a day and it's, it's a very simple fix. And, and sometimes it does, does fix a problem. We'll see that typically, um, you know, we've used some locations where used across traffic does not stop and that's helped, uh, and that's similar to what you were talking about. But it, it depends, but yeah, sometimes it can and it's, it's a cheap solution that we'll usually look at right away.
Great. Thank you. And then I just have one more, so I'm just going to sneak it in here and then I'll probably be done. Um, I know we did these speed reductions on a number of streets, um, a few years ago, um, where we went from, you know, on like H and I, right? And a number of other, um, streets, we, we brought the speed down by about five miles per hour. Miles is like, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Um, do you find that, do you think that that's helping? Is, is it too soon to say? I, I remember that being, um, people had a lot of feelings about the idea of going five miles per hour slower, but, um, I know that a, a few folks who live, um, who lived on those roads initially told me they found it very helpful and that it just overall brought, brought speeds down a little bit. Um, do, do you think that, that that approach has been helpful?
Um, it's hard to say. Um, I, I know there, there's two things that we did. So one was we reduced speed limits within school zones to, uh, 15 or 20 miles an hour, depending on what the street was. That was a number that was three or four years ago. And then previous to that, we reduced speed limits on a few roads. For example, H and I was lowered from 35 to 30. Has it helped? I, I think it's, the, the speeds are probably similar to what they were, you know, when it was reduced. Uh, we don't have a, we typically don't have a lot of speeding collisions. Most of our collisions are red light running, um, they're, you know, distraction, not paying attention. So we don't typically have a ton of speeding collisions. So it's hard to like gauge, did it, did it reduce? Um, so it's hard, it's hard to say if we saw a big improvement out of it. I think if we're able to, to, to make it a little more manageable and if the public is noticing a reduction in speeds, then I think that's a win in those situations.
Any other questions or comments? I really appreciate that report. Um, it was very useful. Would love to have a copy of it. So.
Sure. I can, I can make it available for sure.
Perfect. All right. I think with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, let you have the rest of your night. Go work in your garage. Maybe you're doing something cool.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Bye. Um, and now is that all for your report, City Manager Slattery?
Yes, it is. And thank you, Special Project Manager Elsmore. That was a very comprehensive report.
All right. So we will close out with our, um, council reports. It is about five minutes to nine, so maybe we could do this without having to extend the meeting? It's 9:30 we extend the meeting, right? All right. We'll start with Councilmember Molten.
Uh, I'll go fast. I went out to, um, have a few meetings on the horizon, but, uh, nothing significant from now on the last meeting. I did go to Arts Live and, uh, Councilmember Bauer is right, it was pretty darn packed for an off-season, um, mostly off-season event. It was really full and lots of people, uh, cruising around, eating, drinking and buying, uh, gifts and looking at art and local businesses and it's wonderful to see. And there was also a lot of out-of-towners there, really very interesting. Had some people from LA, met some people from San Diego, um, met some people from Portland. I'm out, I have a microphone when I go out, so people will talk to me, but, uh, just really great to see Eureka, uh, waking back up.
Excellent.[1746.71] Excellent. That's nice. Councilmember Bergel?
Well, I will keep it very brief. Let's see, so I've gone to a lot of different meetings lately. But I did something exciting. I did get to attend the, not really the grand opening, but the Bear and Coyote groundbreaking. And I'll tell you, that is going to be an amazing game changer for our city. I really appreciate Bear River for stepping up and supporting that. And I have a whole list, but I'm just going to say this. So, and then secondly, the perilous plunge is coming up, and I could still use some donations. So if you want to see me jump in the bay, go on the Discovery Museum website, and I'm sure there's a few of you. I can name you actually. But go ahead and go on there, and you can donate. Thanks.
Thank you. And gosh, the bear exhibit, it's been a long time since our last meeting.
It really has.
Awesome. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I first of all want to just mention April 23rd, which is the day after Earth Day. We're going to have a Cooper Gulch cleanup again, so we're going to be doing invasive species removal, trash, you know, just basically beautifying our park. So please come out to that. It'd be great to have you. I got to walk through the Skywalk with Congressman Huffman, which was really cool. He was amazed by it. A bunch of us were there. And exciting to see, get our congressman up there to see that incredible asset to our city. Arts Alive, like Councilmember Moulton said, was just the most awesome day. It was freezing, but it was just great to see hundreds of people out there having a good time. So that was really cool. And then got to attend a meeting with the committee chairs for all of our city commissions and committees. And that was just great, and I want to thank all those that attended for their service to the city. It's awesome to see. And then I also did the, and Councilmember Bergel was there too, the Pack Out cleanup on Vigo Street was also a typical amazing eye-opening day to see a lot of really messed up habitat. But, you know, there was 40 people there. I thought that was pretty cool. And as it's Volunteer Appreciation Week, it was great to recognize all those people and thank Pack Out for putting that on. And then lastly, I read an article just a couple of days ago about, from the UN, United Nations saying our window of opportunity to address climate change is about as close as you can get. And I really look forward to that Climate Action Plan getting from the county to us and for us to implement it because time is running out, and it's about our kids. So just the last word of not to be discouraging, but we got to do something. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Royal?
Great. Well, Councilmember Bergel and I had a good two-by-two meeting with Eureka Chamber of Commerce today and with our staff, and that was really helpful to touch base with them. I do want to remind folks that we're in the middle of our update to our city vision. So we had one meeting last week that was held here in City Hall that is open, and we'll have another one on Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. right here that people can come and participate in and listen to us, you know, talk about what updates we want to make to our vision document and the, you know, sort of marching orders that our staff have that result from that. So it's a great opportunity to kind of hear some more open-ended conversation. Of course, it is an agenda, agendaed meeting, a publicly noticed meeting, so we won't be talking about anything besides our vision. But it is really broad-reaching and an opportunity to hear some of the things that staff and council are working on together. So I'd encourage folks to participate in that. I really want to commend staff for the work thus far with the Eureka Chinatown Project and just for helping make that move forward quickly. I know we're going to see some more results from that soon. And we'll look forward to, there's going to be an event during the same Saturday as Arts Alive, but I think a little bit preceding it, that's going to be a bit of a celebration. And so I'll be continuing to work with the Eureka Chinatown Project leaders and others in the Asian Pacific Islander community on recognition for Asian Pacific Islander Month in May and some of those next steps. And then I wanted to say that I'm really excited that Humboldt Roller Derby started skating again tonight. I didn't get to go for obvious reasons, but I will be skating and dropping in as much as I can with my league and trying to recruit our city attorney to come back into the roller derby fold, or at least come skate with us sometimes. So really exciting to just see athletics for both youth and adults really coming back online. And I'm personally really excited because that's good for my mental health and my physical health. So we all need to take care of ourselves, and there's a million meetings to go to and a million really big things to do. But just a friendly reminder that as the days are getting longer and warmer, go out there, be outside, move your body, do what you need to do.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Castellano?
Let's see, well, I'll start off with, I attended, as Mayor Steven mentioned, I attended the Civic Well Conference. I just want to give a few highlights on that because this is my only time to share it with council and with the public. Let's see, there is a presentation by Cal Ford on the Community Economic Resilience Fund. Especially some of these highlights are opportunities for the city. So I just want to make sure they're on our radar so that we can access them. Just a lot of work being done around climate resilience, including stormwater capture, attention to natural and working lands and land preservation, and kind of smart uses of biomass. The California Strategic Growth Council was also there presenting on Transformative Climate Communities Program, which one of the opportunities there is that as a representative is to advocate for inclusion and participation of our communities in the North Coast in these programs because one thing we noticed is that, oh, they haven't funded anything north of Sacramento. So we're currently really actively working to meet with them and make sure that some of those funds come north, hopefully to Eureka or at the very least our region. There is also information about and presentation around diversity equity and inclusion and decarbonization, and just the idea of making sure people are impacted by climate change need to be at the table. A lot of information on housing policy, which I'm always really keen on, including, and this was another opportunity to advocate for our region, including the Jason Elliott, who's the senior counselor to Governor Newsom on housing policy. So I was able to, like, after his presentation, go and talk to him about our region and how...
Can I confirm that she was a bulldog? She was not going to let him get away.
No, exactly, yeah. I was nice but insistent about making sure that he understands how housing policies may not work the same for rural communities and the rural north. So I've been kind of following up with him on that. But, you know, I did appreciate, he's not a bad person, you know, he's, you know, but... So I want to appreciate him, but, you know, he did bring up just the necessity for housing and relationship to economic growth. And also that pro-housing designation will give points for scoring for housing funds in the future. So this is something that's, I think, going to be important for our community to consider. And also just the idea of the missing middle in housing or people who don't qualify for low-income housing or subsidized housing and people who can't afford market-rate housing, as well as blight laws were brought up, as well as ideas of land banking. So that was that conference. And then I also attended the Eureka Main Street Meeting, as well as the Eureka Main Street Economic Vitality Meeting. At the Eureka Main Street Meeting, there were, our new Old Town Maintenance Officer was there. That was really great. Thank you for staff for that. I think that person's going to be a really awesome fit. I also spoke at the California Main Street Conference on Arts and Economic Vitality. And thanks to Amanda for playing so much of a role in organizing Eureka's president at that presence at that statewide conference. I attended the REDEX Strategic Visioning Meeting where housing was the number-one priority for the group there. And that's a group of kind of county-wide, you know, elected representatives. Attended Arts Alive. And the Community Economic Resilience Consortium is now going through a month-long kind of intensive work period together in order to set some goals around housing. This is specifically the housing group. And I'm the regional captain for Californians for the Arts Advocacy for the month of April because, and I might talk more about that next time. That's it.
I meant that in the best way, that you were bulldog. We are really lucky to have Leslie on our side advocating for housing to the state. And with that, we will close tonight's meeting, and we'll see y'all in a couple weeks. Thank you.